Good afternoon. Welcome to the December 23rd, 2024 meeting of the Salina City Commission. And this will be our final meeting of the year. So may we have a roll call. Or is the, have you notified the Kansas Open Meetings Act?
Yes.
Okay, may we have a roll call?
Mayor Longby.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hopick.
Here.
Commissioner Ivey.
Here.
Commissioner Langwitz.
Here.
Thank you. All who are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For those tuning in, you might notice a little new look here in the meeting room. This is our first big meeting with our new monitors and so far it's looking real good. So we do have a couple of public hearings. Item 3.1.
Item 3.1, conduct a public hearing and consider approval of the 2024 amended budget.
I will open the public hearing and Ms. Pack.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mayor and Commissioners, Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. Statute requires that the city hold a public hearing and have City Commission approval to amend their budget. The notice of public hearing was published on December 11th. As I presented on November 25th, there are four funds that need amendments. The first is the Sales Tax Capital Fund. We're requesting an amendment of $267,000 to a total of $682,000. This was due to an approval back in December of 2023 to approve the SkyWest overnight flight scheduling in an amount of $400,000. The second fund is the Tony's Pizza Event Center Fund. We're requesting that that amount be increased to $1,100,000. The reason for this budget amendment is due to some unforeseen expenditures during the year and some expenses that came in higher than expected. The third fund is the Sanitation Fund and we are recommending an increase of a little over $1 million to the total budget expenditure of $5 million in that fund. This too had some approval of unfunded projects and so this is increasing that authority to spend that money for those projects. And the last one is the Golf Course Fund. We're requesting that that be, have expenditure totals of $1,100,000, which is an increase of a little over $240,000. This fund has had some significant unexpected repairs to some of the wells and things like that. So that fund came up short in their budgeting. There are two actions for you this evening. One is to conduct a public hearing and the second is consider by motion the approval of the amendments of the budget. So your options are to approve by motion the amended budget, approve it with amendments, or not to approve it. And I would stand for any questions that you might have about these particular funds and their need for amendment.
Questions for Ms. Pack.
On the golf course, did you say that those additional expenses were like well, what was the...
They did have some well repairs. They also had some irrigation system issues that came in, that they had come in. And their cost of vehicles and equipment was much higher than they expected.
We redid our irrigation system out there, how many years ago was that?
About three or four years ago, but in speaking to them, a lot of this was well issues, not the actual piping of the irrigation, but the other connections and things like that.
That was my question, so thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you. Is there any other staff comments?
Commissioners, some of you had questions about some of those expenditures that were approved by you and how it was that they didn't end up in the budget. It's really a matter of timing. That 2023 expense that Ms. Pack described, if you think back, we approved the 2023 budget in the summer and early fall of 2023. Then you made the authorization following the approval of that 2024 budget in 2023. And then that authorized, that added expenditure in '24 and into '25. So it was really kind of a timing thing. That as well as the sanitation fund are examples of where, after we'd set the budget, something came before you, you approved it. And this is kind of a catch-up to sync up the budget with that approval.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this budget item? So I will close the public hearing and bring this back for action.
Mayor Longby, I move we approve the 2024 amended budget.
Second that. A motion is second to approve the 2024 amended budget. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries by zero. Item 3.1.
Item 3.2, conduct a public, conduct a public hearing and consider approval of Resolution Number 24-8263 declaring 122 East Jewell Avenue to be unsafe and dangerous and directing that the structures be raised and removed by the city.
I will open the public meet, hearing and Mr. Furbeck.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Sean Furbeck, Dangerous Structures Specialist with Development Services. Today, we're here to talk about 122 East Jewell Avenue. On October the 14th, 2024, Resolution Number 248240 was adopted. This resolution scheduled a timeline for the owner to repair or demolish this, the structure. The timeline for demolition was, he had to have a demo permit by November 13th, 2024. Timeline for repairs was a permit by November 28th, 2024. To date, no permits have been issued and no repairs have been started. The owner, by happenstance, I found out that the owner passed away on November 14th of 2024. I've been in contact with several members of his family, his siblings, who advised that they wanted nothing to do with this structure and said they weren't going to be here. So I don't know if they are or not. I also had contact with the family's attorney. And he again informed me that there are no family members that want anything to do with this structure and that he did not believe any of them would be in attendance today. With that information, we're asking for approval of Resolution 82, correction, 8263, directing the structure at 122 East Jewell Avenue be raised and removed by the city and the premises made safe and secure. The cost associated with administrative fees shall be billed through the city clerk's office for payment by the owner within 30 days. If full payment is not received, the charges shall be certified to the Slayne County Clerk and paid laced on the tax roll. Option number two would be to postpone consideration of Resolution 248263, pending the provisions of additional information or modification of the deadline or provisions as directed by the commission. The third option is to decline the, to approve the Resolution Number 248263. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, I will say that I have been by the structure and it's, it's time. And I'm sad to hear that, what you discovered.
You're right on both accounts.
Yep. Thank you. Any public comment? I will close the public hearing and bring this back for action.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of Resolution Number 24-8263 determining 122 East Jewell Avenue in the city of Salina to be unsafe and dangerous and directing the structures to be raised and removed by the city.
Second. A motion is second to approve Resolution Number 24-8263 declaring 122 East Jewell Avenue to be unsafe and dangerous and directing that the structure be raised and removed by the city. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Bring us to the consent agenda.
Item 4.1, consider approval of the minutes of the meeting of December 9th, 2024. Item 4.2, consider approval of Resolution Number 24-8261 describing the 2024 corporate limits of the city of Salina. And item 4.3, consider acceptance of an offered public utility easement dedication from South Ohio Land LLC on Lot 1, Block 3, and Liberty Edition Number 3 on the west side of South Ohio Street, south of Schilling Road.
Is there any public comment on a consent agenda item? Is there any item a Commissioner would like to remove? entertain a motion for approval.
Move we can, we approve the consent agenda.
Second. A motion is second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Administration, item 5.1.
Item 5.1, consider authorizing the city manager to sign an agreement with SCS engineers for professional engineering services for the Salina Municipal Solid Waste Landfill.
Mr. Coach.
Mayor, Commissioners, Jim Coach, city engineer. We are here to have you authorize city manager to sign the contract for the landfill engineering consultant. 2024 was, was a big year for us at the landfill. There's more development going on in Salina than anyone can remember in recent history. There's been much more demolition activity here in town trying to clean up our structures. We had a major wind event at the end of July that we've finally got the debris burned from that event just this past week. The size of that pile was approximately the size of a football field, 15 to 20 feet high. So it was a significant, significant fire. We had the retirement of our landfill superintendent, Larry Hammond's. And I'd like you, to introduce you to Tilden Crable. He is the superintendent at the landfill now, is in the back row there.
Come on up.
Mayor, Commissioners, nice to meet you.
Thank you. Glad you're taking the helm because the landfill is something, one of those city services we take for granted.
Yes, sir.
And sitting here, I've learned more about landfill science and how much it costs.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, we're glad that Tilden and his supervisor, Josh Ingram, are out there taking care of it. It's, but the budget for the landfill is three to three and a half million dollars a year. It's an enterprise fund. All of their money comes from what they charge people. So it's a, it's its own little corporation. It's been so busy, we're making, proposing to make some changes next year to try to increase the flow in and out of the landfill. That's one of the significant cost increases you're going to see in this year's request. Any questions for Tilden?
Thank you, gentlemen.
All righty. Like I said, 2024 was a big year with the retirement of Larry. We did finish Cell 21 just this fall. And just this past week, we got authorization from the Kansas Department of Health and Environment to actually start using that cell. Use of the, a new cell takes about six months to a year to kind of fluff the bottom with softer materials, just so that we don't poke holes in the liner system to protect our groundwater. So they'll continue to be filling up the top of Cell 20. And then also, we call it fluffing, Cell 21 with softer materials. So that's going to be a significant, significant effort this, this coming year. As you, as you mentioned, Mayor, it's very technical as far as landfill compliance. And we've hired a landfill consultant, you know, ever since I can remember. And actually, we've used the same consultant or they're, one of their subsidiaries because they buy each other out since 2008. Every three years, we go out with an RFQ, a request for qualifications. We use the qualifications-based selection where we select the firm most qualified and then we negotiate fees with that firm. In this case, we had four firms express an interest. We went through the qualifications-based selection with not only myself, but the previous superintendent and the current superintendent. Went through the qualifications and felt like, after reviewing those qualifications, that SCS engineers was still the best qualified firm to do the work for us. You can see the criteria, the six qualification factors we used. We used a scoring matrix, tried to be as objective as, as we can. And then also weighed in the performance of SCS engineers for the last several years. As I mentioned, this was a big year for us, just a lot of input. Starting to get some delays at the, at the, getting in and out of the landfill because it's a, it's a single stream. They weigh in and out on the same set of scales. We have a traffic light signal system and, and our scale that we currently have has been repaired several times. And we, we finally came to the realization, we probably need to replace it, but we'd like to replace it with a two-scale system so that we can separate the traffic going into and out of the landfill, but we have to keep our current scale in use. So it'll, it'll mean offsetting the, the whole traffic way to the south of the current scale location. Doing the engineering and potentially environmental work, trying to build something at the landfills, got its own environmental challenges that the cost estimate just for that scale house design was $450,000. We believe we can probably get it for half of that, but our consultant was really reluctant until they can do some groundwork and geotechnical work to really see what we've got. But we are going to try to value engineer not only the, the scale house system, but also relocating our limb area to where it makes more sense to try to separate the streams of traffic, the regular landfill traffic, from the yard waste traffic. Because much of that yard waste traffic is residential and doesn't get charged, so it doesn't need to be weighed. The cost of a road or access or trying to logistically manage that is something that we would like, someone that's familiar with landfill design help us with. So that was another $150,000. We don't think it'll cost that much, but we wanted to be prepared so we wouldn't have to come back later. But those two items are $600,000 out of the total $721,000 we're asking for next year. It's a three-year contract. 2026 is about $400,000 and then 2027, we actually do the landfill design for the next cell. Because we're on the south end of the peninsula, we're actually going to the north side of the landfill. So we're going to start construction on that cell a year early, just because of the logistics of trying to keep using Cell 21 and then also fluffing Cell 6 in, in 2028. So, and we've got a lot of, lot going on as far as the landfill. SES has done a lot of good work for us in the past. They did do our waste characterization and recyclables composition study last year and we've used that to try to improve our recycling and reuse here in the community. Cell 6, the, also includes a new access road to the north side of the landfill. That, that, that road will be used for the next 30 years, but we will have to pave a road up to the north side of the landfill, just south of the big water tank that's out there.
Is that the road that's under construction now?
At the landfill?
Yeah.
No, it's not under construction. It'll be designed this, that, that road will be designed in 2027.
What's under construction now?
We, we worked on our current road. We did some patching and overlay work on it as, as the final cell construction at the landfill.
I was thinking the last time I was out there, they were grading for a new road about halfway in there to the limb area.
No, actually, we, our borrow site was, was about halfway up that, that roadway between the office and the limb area. We had the, the borrow area, they had to cross the road and then go clear to the west side of the landfill to stockpile soil for our use during Cell 21, the life of it. So they were eradicating some of that road and finishing up. They put the topsoil back on the borrow site and was doing work on that. Okay, that's your question? Okay. Because we originally budgeted for $195,850 for this upcoming year. A lot of these emerging needs as far as the working on the scale house system and the yard waste system, the cost estimate for 2025 went up significantly. Much like Debbie Pack indicated in the, the previous presentation, is we budgeted early last summer for next year. And then as the problems emerged and the, and the wind event made it even more apparent we needed to do something with our yard waste, the priority for new scale system and potentially new yard waste site emerged. Because those were not budgeted for, we may need to also do a budget amendment next year for about $150,000. We had budgeted about $300,000 for the scale house design. It's $450,000 and then the $150,000 for the yard waste concepts will be in addition to what we had originally budgeted for. We do have a substantial balance in the landfill funding. As you may recall, we split out a separate capital improvement plan or budget for all of the heavy equipment and machinery that's needed at the landfill. Much of that equipment to purchase is over a million dollars, the bulldozers, the compactors, the scrapers. So we have a reserve fund for capital of $6,735,000. The actual landfill budget reserve is $1,200,000, taking into account these proposed engineering costs as well as the proposed construction costs. We ran our financial model for the construction costs of a new scale system next year. And the financial model is sustainable for the next several years at our annual $2 per ton increase that we've, we've standardized over the last several years. Next year, the, the tonnage, per tonnage, flat tonnage will go from $46 a ton to $48 a ton. With that, the financial model, we have adequate funds to do it. It's an enterprise system that they, they have to pay for their own improvements. We do need to do, keep growing and making improvements so that we can accommodate all the growth here in Salina. We have the standard options for your consideration. One is to authorize city managers to sign the next three-year contract with SCS engineers for $7,000,000, or $721,850 for next year, $441,350 for 2026, and $416,850 for 2027. The 2026 and 2027 annual contracts or summaries will come to your, the commission for approval. Your options are to approve those for city managers, allow the city manager to sign those agreements, make that decision with amendments. You can postpone the action or you can take no action. But we have changed the landfill engineering contract. It usually commenced the 1st of February, which made it pretty cumbersome as far as our fiscal year trying to sync things up. So we did change it to a January 1st to December 31st contract, starting with this, this cycle. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Any public comment? Bring this back for action.
Mr. Mayor, move to authorize the city manager to execute the 2025 to 2027 agreement with SES engineers to perform professional engineering services for the Salina Municipal Solid Waste Landfill in an amount not to exceed $721,850 for 2025, $441,350 for 2026, and $416,850 for 2027. The amounts for 2026 and 2027 will be included in subsequent budget requests to the City Commission.
Second that. Didn't think we were going to get a second. That's a lot of money for trash. Okay, we have a motion and a second to authorize the city manager to sign an agreement with SES engineers for professional engineering services for the Salina Municipal Solid Waste Landfill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item 5.2.
Item 5.2, consider approval of Resolution Number 24-8267 amending the Salina Parks and Recreation Master Plan Priority Matrix.
Mr. Hammond.
Good afternoon, Mayor Longby and Commissioners. Jeff Hammond, Director of Parks and Recreation. Today, we propose to the governing body Resolution 24-8267, which is aimed to amend the priority, priority matrix of the Salina Parks and Recreation Master Plan. A little bit of background, adoption, I'm sorry, Resolution Number 187581 was adopted in 2018 for the master plan. And then the priority matrix of the maintenance items contained in that master plan was adopted by Resolution 19-7730. The original priority matrix of the master plan contained 187 improvement and maintenance items. The project priorities of the master plan, there's three main project priorities. One was to maintain our existing assets, which the priority matrix was related to. It focused on $5.6 million in deferred maintenance in our park system, upgrades for Bill Burke, BFRA, and other facilities. The second project priority was to expand the facilities that we do have, broaden trails, enhance Kenwood Cove. And then the third project priority was innovative vision for concepts that were, would be new to Salina, more turf inffields, new water features, Lakewood Park, revamping that along with the Smokey Hill River Fest. We proposed the plan amendments for some additional rationale, some additional rationale for bringing these proposed plan amendments. It's been, you know, six years or five years since the master plan priority matrix was brought before you. Certain parks have an underutilization for that proposed project from the master plan. We've had improved maintenance of parks through staffing as a result of the pay plan and being more full-staffed, been able to get an improved level of maintenance and, and have a higher level of quality in those parks. The playground replacement plan has been implemented and funded and we have dedicated funding source for that playground replacement plan. You know, landscaping staff is already strained by the existing and future landscaping plans, whether it be Santa Fe Corridor or the future of the Ninth Street Maintenance. And we have landscaping plans for other parks. And then feasibility challenges with some of the, with some of the original projects, plans due to changes in the, in our park system since 2018. The plan, the Resolution 24-8267 has two exhibits with it. The first exhibit is the proposed items to be removed. And Exhibit B is the Parks Improvement Plan or the Priority Matrix of the Parks Maintenance Master Plan without those items in it. I was not, I was not intending to speak about every item that we are proposing to, to remove from the master plan. However, I did speak about these, speak about these a little more in-depth at our study session on December 9th. But I certainly can ask, answer questions about specific items. Options before you today for Resolution 24-8267 would be to approve the resolution, to approve the resolution with amendments. the resolution with amendments. Option three would be postpone consideration of the resolution or four would be to do not approve the resolution. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to stand for questions at this time. We do recommend option number one for this action item.
Questions?
Had a couple real quick. I noticed on three of the parks it talked about defer to Playground Replacement Plan, and I don't believe that was in here. Is that, do we have replacement plans for each park for the equipment and how long does that go?
We have, it's a 20-year plan. And we do have a replacement plan scheduled for every playground unit we have, which is 29 of them. And it is on that plan, yes.
Staff identified every playground, its current condition, its life cycle, our available funding source, and put together a recurring replacement plan based on that.
And then could you explain two of the Kennedy Park, and I believe it was Schilling Park just talked about maintaining the neighborhood parks on USD 305 land. Could you explain how those agreements are and how that's going to move forward, I guess?
Sure. There is an agreement with USD 305 that is a long-term agreement where that we, as part of a neighborhood park improvement plan, many years ago, we had joined, had an agreement with USD 305 to have parks on those land, Kennedy and Schilling. And at the time, in 2018, there was a push to, because of our staffing, because of vacancies that we could not fill, we were actively trying to reduce maintenance of our park system. And I believe we're in a much better position now staffing-wise to take care of those park properties. And there are, to me, there are important neighborhood parks to maintain in Schilling and Kennedy and maintain those parks. And we have made several improvements, whether it be parking improvements, amenities to those areas, whether it be parking or drinking fountains or grills or shelters. And so it's important to me, it's been important to me as director to continue maintaining those as neighborhood parks.
So at Schilling, there's two playgrounds. One's ours, one's USD 305. And if I understood city manager correctly, Schilling is locked up during...
That's my understanding. And they've actively added more fencing to many of their parks on USD 305 property.
Is Kenwood the same way or is there just one?
Kenwood Park is...
I mean, Ken...
Kennedy.
Kennedy, I mean.
That is, I'm not aware of the playground at Kennedy. That's the school property. Ours is not fenced off.
In that regard, I would add one thing, and I need to credit my wife as we were having a conversation about this. She noted, as a parent of a preschooler that wasn't going to school, even though the school playground might be open, you know, it's not necessarily available during the day. As a parent that wants to take a child to the playground, the school system may have it in use and they wouldn't have that opportunity.
Because I think at Schilling, one time we talked about combining those or something because it seemed redundant to have two close to each other. So, okay. Thank you.
Yeah. I noticed on Number 176 and 186, proposed bicycle playgrounds, including ramps and a pump track. And the comment for each one was that other parks would serve as a better location for BMX skate park and dog park. And the original plan, 187, it was, plan was to remove and relocate the skate park to Kenwood Park. I don't see the skate park anywhere. Which plan is it on now? Or where is it as far as our planning to have a skate park somewhere?
The, those two items, they said, 176 and 187, 176 was a part of the master plan consultants to develop Thomas Park and have a BMX or skate park at that park. We believe that is staff, as far as Parks and Rec staff believes, that's a little inaccessible to the community and hard to get to from a bicycle at Thomas Park. We believe there's a better location, which is where it's currently at, a Centennial Park. Centennial Park residents believe that the skate park should stay in their neighborhood. And so we, as far as this item for Thomas Park on 176, that's the, kind of the basis for my amendment, is to we don't want it at Thomas Park, we want to maintain it at Centennial.
Right. And I would agree with that logic. But where is Centennial Park? Where's the planning or what stage are we in for the planning for the skate park itself?
There is a, an effort this year by myself and my staff to develop a Centennial Park sub master plan or a park improvement plan to incorporate those changes for Centennial Park, whether they be a trail, the renovation of the skate park, a lighted pathway. There are several items in this, in the master plan relating to Centennial Park. There was not a specific item for the skate park for Centennial in the master plan. But that conversation will be forthcoming in the, in the, in the future relating to how, what we're going to do for the skate park at Centennial and keeping it at Centennial Park. Number 187 was relating to putting the skate park at Kenwood Park, but that was with the assumption that Tennis Center did not go in. So that land is no longer available to have a skate park at Kenwood Park.
So right now, then, there's no concrete plan to upgrade the current skate park apparatus?
At Centennial.
At Centennial?
There is not a concrete plan right now. However, it is our intent, it's my intent this year to have a, to reach out to landscape architecture firms and help us with designs, help us with estimated costs relating to Centennial Park, and then come before you, whether it be through strategic planning or through a budgetary process to plan for those improvements to Centennial, which would include skate park.
All right. As I went through this list, I know I've seen the number before, but I can't recall it. How many parks do we have in our park system?
We have 26 named or designated parks.
26.
26 designated.
And I know we had a, a plan to, as new neighborhoods develop, to add neighborhood parks. And I look back these past few years, we've got new neighborhoods. Is there any projection on timeline of adding more neighborhood parks?
I don't know if I can answer that question right now. I don't have a plan yet to, I think if I'm going back, I'm trying, I've been, that first phase of this project priority of the master plan was to address deferred maintenance in our existing park system.
Right.
I think as we get into that second phase, that's where we start looking at that.
And I may try to help there a little bit. So our comprehensive plan actually divides the community up into park districts. And so as residential subdivisions develop, they pay a park fee that goes towards their district. And then the Parks Department, the Finance Department follow how that funding by district and invest it in parks. And in the interest of full disclosure, that amount is relatively insignificant compared to the cost of maintenance and purchasing of any playground equipment of significance. But our current approach isn't necessarily a park in each new residential subdivision. It's that they contribute towards parks within the district that they're in.
Now, our developers have the option of putting a small park area in or paying that fee. Is that correct?
Yes. I don't know that we've had any opt for that. My last community, it was the other way around. It was a park in the neighborhood and then they dedicate it to the city. And that comes with difficulties as well as you accumulate parks and maintenance responsibilities spread throughout the community. So our, you know, we identify neighborhood parks and then we identify destination parks in our park system. So Cherry IV would be an example of a destination park and some of the other parks that Mr. Hammond mentioned would be a neighborhood park.
So for any future neighborhood parks, where would that land come from or be?
If you look at other communities, it's called an exaction out of the subdivision itself. We don't have a history of that. So I don't, I don't know that we have developers volunteering to offer up the footprint necessary for parks in their neighborhoods.
So we would have to mandate it in effect if we wanted to have neighborhood park?
Certainly an option to the developers, but we don't have a history of them electing to do that. If that's something that you want to do, frankly, I think that's probably part of our comprehensive planning process because with it comes locational issues and long-term design considerations that you would want to take into account. So, you may recall in past strategic planning conversations, we've talked about the need for a comprehensive plan update in the offing. This type of policy change would probably be most appropriate to take up during comprehensive planning.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Any public comment on the parks? Bring this back for action.
Mayor Longbine, I move we approve Resolution Number 24-8267 to amend the priority matrix of the Salina Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
I'll second that. Motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 24-8267 to amend the priority matrix of the Salina Parks and Recreation Master Plan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item 5.3.
Item 5.3, consider approval of Resolution Number 24-8270 amending the 2025 staffing table position, classification, and salary schedule and repealing Resolution Number 24-8233.
Ms. Fisher.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Even though you just approved the 2025 staffing table and pay plan classification, we have already identified some changes that we are bringing before you. Two is the three are an effort to capitalize on abilities and skills within our organization and realign some duties and responsibilities to improve capacity from that standpoint. Those would be the computer technology role and the Parks and Recreation role, to just increase the pay grades there. So to align those, so we aren't having equity issues by assigning more of those duties without also aligning the pay grades. And then the one in utilities is a position, this is truly adding a position. There would be some potential budgetary impact there. However, we aren't so certain that we will be able to easily fill this, but we thought it's time to give it a try. We've got a lot of large projects going on within this department. Consideration for that, again, taking advantage of skill sets. We've already realigned some individuals within that department. But in terms of needing to attract someone and then also long-term succession planning, we didn't want to not put this back into our pay plan and our staffing tables for this role and, and just not even try for that role. When this was being reviewed, it was noted that there was an unfortunate typographical error on the position that was, or within one role that was not added to the classified positions and grades. It was included in last year's staffing table and that is the assistant utilities role. Just to recap, we previously took the director role, the deputy director role, split that into two assistant roles and did away with another position. But it didn't get added. We didn't catch that it didn't get added to just the classification it was on the staffing table that you had previously. So I do have those corrected as well. Again, that is the only change that you will notice on here in comparison to the one that was in the packet. Should I go ahead and hand these out?
While you're doing that, I might just elaborate a little bit. We attempted to fill the deputy utility director position and were unsuccessful. We used a search consultant to try to help us and were unsuccessful. So then we pivoted to the two assistants role and, two assistants approach. Were able to fill one of those two. And so now as we continue to try to staff up the utilities department, we're coming back with a deputy utilities director option to attempt that recruitment one more time. If we can find an assistant, we're really just, at this point, trying to find some people with the right skill set that can help move the department forward and position ourselves to be as flexible as possible depending on what the market brings us.
Yep. That summarizes it very well. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Thank you. Any public comment? We'll bring this back for action.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of Resolution Number 24-8270, amending the 2025 staffing table, position, classification, and salary schedule for 2025.
Second? I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 24-8270, amending the 2025 staffing table, position, clarification, and salary schedule, and repealing Resolution Number 24-8233. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 5.0. Item 5.4.
Item 5.4, consider authorizing the mayor to sign the first amendment to the Salina Destination Development Phase 1 Development Agreement and authorizing the city manager to sign the second amendment to the American Rescue Plan Act Economic Expansion Rural Housing Grant Agreement.
Mr. Hennessy.
Thank you, City Commissioner Sean Hennessy, Assistant City Manager. As you're all very well aware of, we've discussed quite a bit. The city was able to get a $25 million grant from the state for a large housing development off of Magnolia and I-135. As we went through that process, we entered into an agreement, we went through a competitive process to select who is going to develop those. And Salina Destination Development was eventually chosen. We entered into a Phase 1 Development Agreement with them as well as an agreement with the state on how to disburse that $25 million in incentives for those apartments. At this point in time, we also have completed a Phase 2 Agreement with the developer. So that's going to lead to a total of 500 units. What you have before you is a series of relatively minor amendments to those agreements, which reflect the fact that we have entered into the Phase 2 Agreement and also clarify some aspects of those two documents. So briefly, I'll go through the changes and answer any questions you may have. In the first document, there's three changes. And this first document is the amendment to the agreement with the state for the disbursement of that $25 million in incentive funds. The first change is it changes future phases, which is what the original agreement had to Phase 2. Because at the point in time when we originally entered to this agreement, we didn't know how many phases there'd be or if there would be a Phase 2. So this first modification just changes future phases to Phase 2. Secondly, it changes the date for when the grant administration plan for Phase 2 has to be submitted to the state. It was originally supposed to be submitted by December 15th. We weren't going to be able to meet that due to the meeting schedule. So that just changes the date from December 15th to December 31st. Number three, at the request of the developer, because there was concern, under the original grant agreement with the state, we have until 2026 to expend all of the grant monies. And the original agreement with the state, as well as the DA with the developer, called for expenditure of all the infrastructure funds before they would get a per-unit reimbursement. The Phase 1 Development Agreement called for $4 million in expenditure on infrastructure and then at completion of that expenditure of all those infrastructure funds, then they would get reimbursement on a per-unit basis. The developer, because they are building, for example, in Phase 1, they're building 248 units, but their concern was they're going to be building several different apartment blocks in different groups, that they wouldn't be able to expend all the infrastructure money in time. be able to expend all the infrastructure money in time and effectively in order to be able to access those funds. So what they requested was to be able to receive simultaneously both the infrastructure reimbursement as well as the per-unit reimbursement. They still will obviously have to submit the paperwork and the documentation and to get approval before they get any reimbursement. That is the modifications to the agreement with the state. The first amendment to the DA has some of those same changes and a few others. One is, much like the agreement with the state, it changes all the future phases to Phase Two. It just clarifies that language. It also gets the legal description because at that point in time, when it was originally drafted, we didn't have the finalized legal description, and so it modifies that with the current legal description. Much like in the agreement with the state that I just talked about, it does allow for simultaneous reimbursement for both infrastructure as well as the per-unit reimbursement. It also, in the original Phase One DA, it called for reconvenance of the property for Phase Two. So what the original DA called for was for the Phase Two property, and if you remember, there's the Phase One property and then the Phase Two property at the same location. During the period while we were working on the Phase Two Agreement, it called for the reconvenance of that property to the city, which would then be given back to the developer at that point in time when the Phase Two Agreement is in place. Well, since the Phase Two DA is in place, that is kind of moot, so we're just removing that from the original DA because we do have that Phase Two Agreement in place. And then it also adds a provision that allows the interest which is accrued on the grant funds to be utilized for expenditures on this project, be it street improvements or other improvements that are approved and allowed under the grant agreement. And so those are the modifications in these two documents, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
Just a small one. On the interest on the grant money, is that may be used or shall be used? Is that under our, at our discretion?
I had a conversation with Representative of the State early on, and their expectation was that the principal that they provide and the interest is only eligible to use for eligible expenses for the housing project. So it'd either be apply it to this project or, I guess, return it to the state of Kansas. It would not be interest available for us to make use of elsewhere in our organization.
No, I mean, as far as which part of the project we wanted it to be used for.
Well, it just provides eligible expenses, and then the agreement identifies in detail what are eligible expenses.
Got it.
For those that may not know what we're discussing here, take a drive out to Menards, you'll see they're making a lot of progress on this first phase of these apartments. And I see as things progress, there's going to be more and more activity going on, bringing in the plumbers, the electricians, the drywallers.
In fact, to Mr. Hennessy's prior point, I want to reassure you, there's not a concern about the ability to fully expend the funds or complete the project. We started this conversation in more of a consecutive, first we'll do infrastructure, then we'll build housing, and now as we're into it, it's all happening concurrently, whether we'll be working on Phase One housing, Phase Two infrastructure, and this just reimburses them for their eligible expenses rather than deferring all that and extending that timeline.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Any public comment? Bring this back for action.
Mayor moved to authorize you to sign the first amendment to the Phase One Development Agreement and authorize the city manager to sign the second amendment to the American Rescue Plan Act Economic Expansion Rural Housing Grant Agreement.
Motion is second to authorize the mayor to sign the first amendment to the Phase One Development Agreement and authorize the city manager to sign the second amendment to the American Rescue Plan Act Economic Expansion Rural Housing Grant Agreement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Item 5.4.
Item 5.5.
5.5.
Consider awarding the bid for the regrading of Matson Field to Smokey Hill Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed $185,868.20, which includes $8,500 in materials for city staff to perform field restoration.
Mr. Lamer.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. Brett Lamer, Deputy Parks and Rec Director. We have before you a request to regrade James Matson Field as part of item 131 on the Master Plan Priority List, which states renovate James Matson Field. Staff got together and identified some items that needed to be renovated as part of the plan. Some of those items include leveling the playing surface, basically improving all of the turf grass, both infield and outfield, replacing the fence, painting surrounding structures, and replacing the dugouts. Several of these items were already kind of identified on separate projects, one of them being we kind of have a scope out to do all of our fencing in all of our parks, including all the fencing up at Berkeley Family Recreation Area. So we did not include stuff like that in this list. This was simply looking at the playing surface, so leveling the field and improving the turf grass. In May, we met, we requested assistance from the city surveyor to assist us in getting a survey of the field. We knew it had issues. We wanted to see how bad the issues actually were. The survey revealed a large depression behind second base. If you were a second baseman and you're running out to catch a fly ball, and about six feet into the outfield, you drop about nine to 10 inches. That depression kind of expands almost to like left center, to right center, and it goes out into the field about a third of the way. So we knew that that was an issue. We also discovered an issue near, in the infield grass, near home plate, and also the pitcher's mound as well as some areas, some minor areas throughout the field. So staff got together to decide if that's something that we could handle in-house, and with the amount of soil and red shale that would need to be brought in, well, excuse me, taken out first, and then all the stuff that would have to be brought in, we just felt that we did not have the capacity internally to do so. So we decided to see if we could seek bids to have it done by a company. So we brought in Call Valley, and they finished their scope, they designed the scope, they finished that in early September, and it went out to bid. It included, you know, removing existing turf, bringing in soil, installing new sod, and replacing the red shale. That bid was due in late September, and unfortunately, no bids were turned in with the initial bid. Staff had plenty of contact with some contractors that were interested, so we contacted the contractors afterwards, the ones that had shown interest and asked what it was that caused them not to bid, and the main reason was that while the bid was open, it was not enough time to source the bent grass sod. And they stated that if it would been, if it were to be reopened, that they would be willing to bid. So we decided to do that, and the bid reopened in October with an end date of mid-November, and with that one, we got two bids returned, the lowest being Smokey Hill Construction LLC for $289,586.25. That was above what we expected, so staff again met and were working out deals on how to reduce costs even further. And something that we had discussed prior but didn't hold a lot of water because of the urgency to not close the fields was if we don't do sod and we do seed, then it would lower the cost, but it would extend the timeline. At that time, we decided to at least get prices and explore that option. At that time, we tried to keep the bent grass sod as part of the project and do the infield with bent grass sod because it'd be much easier. However, cost was one of the reasons. It was about 21, at minimum, $21,000. And the other issue was we supplied or we helped the contractors find bent grass suppliers, so we gave them the ones that we use, and those suppliers were in kind of an agreement with those contractors, and they didn't feel like it was fair to go into an agreement with us when they already have an agreement with those contractors for the same project. So we decided to switch to seed, much cheaper, but it is a little bit more labor-intensive on the front end. So with the, excuse me, with that, we, it is, with bent grass sod, it is really, really important to keep the weeds out to begin with, and Bermuda grass. It doesn't do well with either one of those. So we decided to do sod, which was relatively cheaper on the bent grass, and also do soil amendments to the infield right away. So we knew we were starting with the best soil possible. So, excuse me, so after those changes, we talked to our bidders, both bidders, and we asked if they would be willing to continue with their bid if we just subtracted the sod options and fertilizer, and they continued to do everything else. Both bidders were agreeable to that, in which case it lowered Smokey Hill's bid to $168,922.10. And then staff would handle the seeding and the soil amendments, which, like I stated, cost about $8,500. $5,000 for the fescue, which is basically all of the outfield and behind home plate, and about $3,500 for seed and for soil amendments for the infield. With that, we added a 5% contingency to that $168,922. So all told, it would be $185,868.20. I wanted to point out that on the fiscal note on your staff report, that table, which started at $4 million and worked its way through some of the things that we've already changed, that was the original budgeted amount. Part of that was originally supposed to have a drainage plan for Berkeley Family Recreational Area, and the original, we went through with a engineering service, went through it, and what they came back was just incredibly too high in cost. So that was taken out, but we are still working with them and on our own to try to find a solution for the larger drainage issues that we're having up there. So I wanted to point that out, that there is still projects left to go on that. So with that, what I have for you today are four options. For approve the motion awarding the bid for regrading James Matson Field to Smokey Hill Construction LLC in the full amount, including the sod for $289,586.25, with a $14,479.31 contingency of 5% for construction contingency for a total project authorization not to exceed $304,065.56, and authorizing the city manager to execute the contract with Smokey Hill Construction LLC upon fulfillment of prerequisites under the bid documents, excuse me. Or, option two, approve a motion awarding the bid for regrading James Matson Field to Smokey Hill Construction LLC in the amount of $168,922.10 with an $8,446.10 construction contingency and an additional $8,500 for materials for staff to perform the field restoration for a total product project authorization not to exceed $185,868.20, and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Smokey Hill Construction LLC upon fulfillment of all prerequisites under the bid documents. There's also option three, which is postpone consideration of awarding the bid of regrading James Matson Field to a specified date and time and provide staff direction regarding additional information or amendments to the city, that the city commission would like to request for further consideration. And option four is do not award regrading James Matson Field and provide staff with further direction. Staff recommends option number two and will stand for any questions that you might have.
Questions for Mr. Lamer.
Is there anything behind second base that's going to recur after this starts?
No. What, one of the things that we, the field is, I hate to say this, as old as I am, and it really hasn't seen a facelift like this, at least in my time. And so what the goal will be, because there is still that larger drainage issue, is that if we do this, then it's going to be on staff to make sure that we make, like recover the field or fix the field after we do have something. If we have a big, you know, three or four-inch rain or something where it's starting to wash out, it'll be on us to make sure we get on it. And the other part of it is proper techniques in making sure when we're dragging the field, we're using proper techniques and not get behind to begin with, and then it's impossible to get back to where.
There's no underground river traveling.
Trying to, yes, like that.
Under there.
Questions?
I have a couple here. So we are, we're obviously scraping infield, outfield, baselines, everything's getting regraded, and where we're, are we replacing the outfield with the fescue bluegrass? Is the infield going to be fescue bluegrass also, or are you going to seed it with the?
Bent grass.
Bent grass.
The infield would be seeded with bent grass, just the area in between baselines.
Right.
The reason for that, if anybody, for anybody that's not familiar, basically, that can be cut really low. Fescue is, most of the fescue that we use here is considered tall fescue, so it wants to be that three inch, four inches tall to be the most healthy. Bent grass can be cut. In fact, I wanted to share that also, if we do the second option, the golf course, who is very familiar with bent grass, because that's what is on a lot of golf courses, assists, will assist us in getting this done, but they can also cut it with a reel mower. So most mowers that you see that we have in the park system are rotary motors, you know, turning the blades in rotary fashion. Bent grass actually is normally cut with a reel mower, so they would have to come over and cut it, and you can cut it real low, and then it just gives you that really good, it slows the ball down a little, but it won't come to a complete stop like if you used fescue.
Do we have sprinkler system throughout both infield and outfield?
Yes.
That'll adequately keep this wet enough?
Yes, it should.
And you thought you would really get a better on the infield by using seed instead of sod? You really, you feel like you'll have less problems with weeds with?
If we do the soil amendments, I think so. Sod obviously gives you a leg up. They've already fought the weeds and all that, but in this case, if we are allowed to get that extra soil, which is listed in the price, it gives you a leg up if you're using a nicer soil, and you should be able to, should be able to do it without much fight.
I mean, personally, I kind of like the sod idea on the infield, just from the fact that if you do the seeding and it doesn't take as well, your infield's a lot, as you talked about, needs to be cut, needs to be much, be smoother than the outfield, I guess, to a certain extent, so.
Just for a heads up, one of the reasons for the expense on the sod is the suppliers are used to doing, I assume, large areas. So they, if you order sod for your yard and it comes in those nice rolls, they don't cut it like that. They cut it in these large rolls that come in on machinery, and so part of the reason for the expense is mobilization because the company comes in and lays it down, and then you take it over after they do that. So that is one of the issues. It's not readily available in small cut pallets like what we have.
And that's the bent grass?
That is the bent grass, yes.
So when they redo a golf green, do they do typically sod?
I would assume so, yes. I don't know for a fact, I'm not, you know, I'm not in that side of things, but yeah, usually what they try to do is, they try to, I know for one, they constantly work on overseeding and seeding to where it doesn't get that way, but I believe if that's the case, if they get to the point where they have to completely reshape it, then it's sodded, I believe.
And then the, we just heard about the golf courses' expenses with irrigation. Has anyone tested out the irrigation up there?
Yeah, it has, it's in use still. It's been in use since it's been done.
Okay, and my mind goes to how much that's going to get torn up with the regrading.
That is part of the plan with Smokey Hill. The agreement is after they're done, they're, because right now what will happen is if we go in and we grade it all off, you're going to hit irrigation heads and some other stuff, but if you bring in a bunch of soil, you're going to cover up those things. So one of the agreements is when they are done, their irrigation adjustments are a part of the agreement, a part of the contract with Smokey Hill.
So they'll have it all mapped out where the?
Yep, they should have everything placed.
In the bigger picture, you talked about with the drainage off the old runway, I'd really like to see that addressed before we. I'd really like to see that addressed before we
Yeah.
do this, but I understand the cost. So are we going to be elevating it quite a bit?
Overall, no. We're, so there's this, and the spec was given to Smokey Hill, there's a slope that the infield is supposed to be at and the outfield is supposed to be at. And overall, our slopes aren't horrible, but as we affect one, it'll, every, it's like a domino, everything after that gets affected. So really, we're not going to be raising from where we're currently at much different. We're just going to make sure it's all at the same level and sloped properly. So you won't, it's not like you're going to walk out on the field and step up onto something. It'll be basically the same level, but everything will be, there won't be this large depression. If you look at the survey, I know it's really small, an eight and a half by eleven, but you'll see as you go into the outfield, all the lines get really close together, and then they start to spread out really far apart. We want those to be more evenly spaced, and that's how you get that nice even slope. Right now, it goes down, and then it just kind of slowly goes the rest of the way, and we just want to make that more even.
Okay. And I'm not finding it now, and I thought I saw it, maybe I'm, I'm dreaming, but was there a timeline so that we, we, we got seeded by April or something?
Yes.
And other?
On the last page of the, right before the fiscal note on the staff report, so if we do the option two, dirt work begins in January here. And then the dirt work complete late March, we, you know, city staff gets access, we start planting and fertilizing the field. Then we give it a growing season of the summertime, city staff overseeds late August, and then we should be able to play games starting in March of 2026.
I know, I saw it, I can't believe I missed, I looked at it twice, so, okay, thank you.
So is there going to be something in place to secure, to keep people off the field?
We can lock those gates, and so obviously if they want to, you know, scale a six foot fence, I mean, we can't stop everybody, but we can lock the gates and do that sort of stuff.
That's what I wanted to know, there was gates, so, okay, thank you.
Do we have a estimated cost of what it would, because if the city does all the seeding and the overseeding, there's, there's labor involved with that.
That is included in that five thousand dollars. Actually, the eighty-five hundred, that includes our hours and, I mean, it, we're not charging it, but there is that. But it's not, overall, the timing of what it would take, because there's an irrigation system, it's not very much. Basically, a couple days worth of work to get it seeded. And then obviously, we have to make sure the irrigation's working, we have somebody go up and kind of babysit a little bit, just make sure we don't have any leaks. And then in the fall, when we come back to overseed, it's, it's not an extreme amount of labor that will be associated, but it's, it's far, far less than what we would spend otherwise.
Where, where will the displaced teams go for that season?
So we're still working on that, but right now, because of the way our new, in fact, maybe I shouldn't be the one talking about this, this could be Travis, but I do know in discussing it with the maintenance supervisor, that they have worked it out with most of them, that they would use what is now Wilbur Field. There might be still some conflicts between the schools at that time, but he's fairly, the maintenance supervisor, very, very confident that we can work those out fairly easily.
So if we put people at Wilbur Field, is that adequate for games and?
Probably not game ready at this point. I'd have to, like I said, I might defer to, to the other staff, but I don't know that it's exactly game ready all the time, but I think it, in a, in a pinch, it probably could, but Travis may be better to speak to that.
Travis Shateley, Recreation Superintendent, the new Wilbur Field, Tower Field, as we called it, youth games, so thirteen, fourteen and under, we have played some games on there. As far as high school games, it's not game ready as it sits. If that makes sense.
So there have been expense to put high school. Are we talking about putting high school games there, or are they going to?
We, right now, we're able to work out everything that we have on our schedule right now at Pestinger, Family Stadium and Dean Evans Stadium. But as far as practices go, we are working out some things to bump some practices up there to the new Wilbur Field, and it's working out so far.
Okay. When we were talking with the baseball enterprises, they always said if they had extra money left over after passenger, is that, I'm looking at you.
I'll defer to the deputy city manager and, and parks director, but we're not aware of funding being available for, for Mattson. We're still closing out Pestinger. And in all honesty, kind of the standing water on Mattson and the identification of it, ponding water is what caused us to make this a priority.
Well, my observations, there's just a lot of times Mattson is not playable. And so my question is, who's the primary users of it?
Yeah, that would mainly occur in the spring and, and in the summer. So you have Sacred Heart Baseball utilizes bats in heavily. And then you have, there's, there's a homeschool group that utilizes it as well. And then you have your baseball enterprises, Salina Babe Ruth in the summer. So those are your primary users with some private use. And then in the fall, there is some adult baseball going on up there in, in the fall. But really, the fall is kind of the late season, if you would say.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to mention, there is also one benefit to having Mattson closed during this timeframe. We're going to start to see some work done at Fire Station Four in that area, so we'll plan to use that parking lot as a laydown area, so it, so it'll be all blocked off, and you won't have the access to it. That'll be a lot easier with no play happening in Mattson, so.
Any other questions? Thank you, gentlemen. Public comment? I missed back fraction.
Mayor Longbine, I move that we award the bid for regrading James Mattson Field to Smokey Hill Construction LLC in the amount of one hundred and sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and ten cents with an eight thousand four hundred and forty-six dollar and ten cent construction contingency and an additional eighty-five hundred dollars for material for staff to perform field restoration for a total project authorization not to exceed one hundred and eighty-five thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty cents and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Smokey Hill Construction LLC upon fulfillment of all prerequisites under the bid documents.
Second. We have motion as second to award the bid for regrading James Mattson Field to Smokey Hill Construction LLC in the amount of one hundred and sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and ten cents with an eight thousand four hundred and forty-six dollar and ten cent five percent construction contingency and an additional eighty-five hundred dollars for materials for staff to perform field restoration for a total project authorization not to exceed one hundred and eighty-five thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty cents and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Smokey Hill Construction LLC upon fulfillment of all prerequisites under the bid documents. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five C. Item five point six.
Item five point six, consider awarding the bid for the Jerry Ivy Memorial Park Improvement Project to Smokey Hill Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed one million nine hundred thirteen thousand one hundred seventy-three dollars and fifty cents.
Mr. Hammond.
Thank you again, Mayor and members of the City Commission, Jeff Hamon, Director of Parks and Recreation. Tonight I have for your consideration, awarding the proposed bid from for Jerry Ivy Memorial Park improver project. The journey with Jerry Ivy Memorial Park started with master plan. Master plan calls out critical improvements to Jerry Ivy Memorial Park, including what we know about his challenges with pond, sidewalks, park connectivity landscaping. We had persistent issues with blue green algae, stagnant water, sediment buildup in that pond, which prompted us to engage McClure Engineering in two thousand twenty-two to evaluate the pond's health and recommend solutions. After that detailed analysis by the engineering firm, determined that the best course of action was to remove the pond and explore alternate water features. Following the engineering consultations with the scope of work, the pond was filled, was demolished and filled in two thousand twenty-three. And at the start of the summer of two thousand twenty-four, during the start, startup of the Jerry Ivy Memorial Park splash pad, it was discovered that a significant amount of water was entering the underground mechanical vault. We investigated plumbing, pipes using small cameras, found many breaks in that plumbing throughout the splash pad, and due to that significant plumbing failure, the splash pad was not available for the, for use in summer of two thousand twenty-four. Some other timelines, August twelfth of this year, we entered into the agreement upon your authorization for design and engineering services with George Butler, George Butler Associates for the design and engineering services for improvements to Jerry Ivy Memorial Park. September twenty-third, staff provided the city commission with a study session for the conceptual design of the officer memorial, the splash pad and the water feature. The feedback at that time from, from the governing body was to provide more detail relating to scale and size of those, of the proposed conceptual designs. And then October fourteenth, we provided a report to review those updated designs in concepts for Jerry Ivy Memorial Park and authorized the solicitation of bids. And the city, the governing body approved the solicitation, solicitation of bids for that project at that time. On November twentieth, the project was put out to bid and advertised using an online plan room through George Butler Associates and also on the city's website. The optional pre-bid meeting was December twelve, I'm sorry, December fifth. We held an onsite optional pre-bid meeting at the site, Jerry, Jerry Ivy Memorial Park to discuss questions and answers with potential bidders, and the bids were open December twelfth. Project deadlines for completion of the elements of the project bid, that were in the project bid documents, were to complete the officer memorial by May fifteenth, which is around the time the police officer memorial event occurs at Jerry Ivy Memorial Park. And the water features, water features in the spray ground were, had a deadline of June fifteenth of two thousand twenty-five. There were liquidated damages included in that project of two hundred dollars per day. We've talked about this several times with the governing body, but the, the vision for Jerry Ivy Memorial Park project included a, a new revamped splash pad, a new interactive wall feature, water wall feature, the police officer memorial will be updated, and updated landscaping, lighting and improved park connectivity were provided as options, as alternates in the bid. The engineer's estimate from George Butler Associates for this work was one million one hundred thousand dollars. And with, that was for the base bid, and there were four alternates as well that had, had estimates associated with it. Overall, in partnership with GPA or George Butler Associates, you know, staff were ambitious on several fronts, including the concept of what we were trying to provide the community. George Butler Associates was ambitious in their design to meet the city's needs, and we were ambitious on our timeline to complete this work. And I was ambitious in getting this before you in this year, before the, at today's date. We did, at the time of developing this project, we did entertain a date of, of a later date, twelve nineteen, as bid closing day, so we cut ourselves a week. The bids were open for three weeks approximately, and, but we, but that would also put us into the new year when we were able to get this before you. It would have been January thirteenth, and we were trying to do this as quick as possible. We had an ambition to get this project under, under contract so we can move forward with the construction project. The project was advertised for bids and Smokey Hill Construction LLC submitted the sole proposal. It was the only bid we received. Smokey Hill Construction's base bid for the project was one million eight hundred twenty-two thousand seventy dollars, while also providing separate bids for the four add alternates. Staff met with Smokey Hill Construction on Tuesday, December seventeenth, to discuss their bid and the possibility of providing a break, a bid breakdown by each element, the splash pad, the water feature component and the memorial. Smokey Hill did provide that bid, bid breakdown of each element, and additionally proposed a con, construction schedule to meet the ambitious project deadline stated in the bid. With Smokey Hill's approval, these, those documents were provided to you in the staff report. Additionally attached are the engineering designs created by George Butler Associates, provided that, that were provided in the bid. Smokey Hill Construction provided an allowance in their bid related to the sealed drawings from the splash pad equipment vendor, which would only be provided when the order was placed. The splash pad vendor would not, was not going to provide those drawings ahead of time without a purchase order. In review of the fiscal note, there are several proposed funding options for the city commission to consider based on the engineer's estimate and the bid, 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 bid from Smokey Hill LLC, utilize remaining park maintenance fund balances. This would defer some or all of park maintenance related projects, drawing from the general fund reserve to fund the, this project, or a combination of both, considering, or considering debt financing. We are presenting several options for your consideration. Approve the project base bid plus a five percent contingency from Smokey Hill, to Smokey Hill Construction, including the splash pad, water wall and memorial, but do not include the alternates, just the base bid. Second option would be to approve only the splash pad portion of the project, deferring the other elements, including the alternates. Postpone consideration of this bid and to conduct further research and provide staff with direction or information or amendments. Reject the base bid or elements and to rebid the project after revisiting the scope and timeline. And lastly, to reject the bid for a future consideration of this item. Staff recommends option number one. I will stand for any questions that you may have. And additionally, Jim Schusler with George Butler Associates is here with us today, and he and I would be able to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions?
Yeah, in recommending option number one, does that come with a recommended financing
Well, this is a little awkward, but I apologize. I think there's a little bit of miscommunication on staff's part. We, I think we were thinking that we need to talk that through with you, see what your appetite was, given the price, and talk about whether we need to revise the scope of this
Well, just one opinion, I, you know, this is something, if we're going to do it, I want us to do it right. Do it right the first time, not drag it out over several years, adding in a piece here, a piece there. Of the financing options, I wouldn't necessarily make this my first option usually, I'd just assume debt finance it and spread it out. I guess I'd be a little hesitant to take two million out of the general fund balance unless it got a windfall last night and it's up to like eighty million dollars or something, but.
Understood. You know, I think we, personally, I was optimistic based on the feedback we had from the designers about the likelihood of competitive bids, that I was pleased it would be an understatement with the scope of the design that we came up with. And so it was, it was pretty startling to have the bids come in where they did. As Mr. Hammond mentioned, we really pushed the timeline, we really kind of tried to move all this along. So it kind of leaves us with questions as to whether, if we're willing to pause and put it back out to bid, consider the scope in a little bit more detail, whether we could realize some significant cost savings. I, not, this is not something we do on a regular basis, we're depending on our designers to be the subject matter experts in that regard.
Do we get just one bid?
Yes.
That's correct.
Yeah, I think one thing to note there is, is if we do rebid it, or I, we don't really have any confidence that if we rebid it, it's going to be a much lower price unless we do a dramatic scope change, so. So so really, if you wanted to do what scope today, we think it's probably going to cost somewhere in the region where we're at right now with the bid that we got. If we want to do something different, you know, we'd have to go back with GBA and and reduce the scope. And GBA is here. Jim Schussler is here. If you have questions about about the scope or scope or the anticipation about what they thought the bid would be, he'd be happy to speak to that as well. He's behind the post, so I can't see him. So I don't know.
And when we talk scope, there are three elements. There's the the spray ground itself, the water wall and then the memorial upgrade. So you know, one element that might bear discussion is the water wall. And then the memorial upgrade and from a timing perspective, this program seems to be the highest priority. But those are all it really kind of turns on your appetite for your your opinion of the scope that's been designed and then your appetite for the cost.
This, you know, when we originally discussed this, you know, I was concerned, you know, I just I wanted to see us get a splash pad up and running because it's used by the public, you know, free of charge to the public. And if I remember right from the drawings, this this splash pad looked considerably different than our other three splash pads. They tried to tie it in from an aesthetic standpoint in with the water wall and everything. And that could be part of our reason for the increased cost on the splash pad with that. I guess we'll have to ask the expert, but because originally weren't we looking at a splash pad being in that 700,000 range? To do something similar to what we maybe had there before?
And Jim, if you want to speak to that, because I I'm not sure that we've actually priced out a splash pad that would be similar to what we replaced. I mean, we splashed, we we priced out what would be a splash pad, kind of a more natural upgraded splash pad for certain. Could we get one for cheaper that's that's kind of a more standard package? I think we could. Jim, if you have any details or ideas about what something like that might run us. I think now would be the time to present that or putting you on the spot.
I got my first question for you, Mr. Schussler's. Do we have a itemized cost of what the splash pad and the I'm guessing the water reservoir and system is the most expensive part? I was a little concerned with their proprietary information. They wouldn't put it out. But how much is just the buying the product?
The correct. Thank you for the opportunity to be here and discuss this project with you. You step up. The the what we showcase as the pump systems, the filtration, whatever, through that proprietary system does provide the best way to maintain and you know, confirm its long term usage to the highest value for many, many years to come. That 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 system being an elevated in its own building as opposed to below grade or within a really low profile does cost some extra money. But in terms of the maintenance, that's why we made that decision on going with the MEC H2O product, which is what we said. That product came in at $327,000 for just the the filtration stuff delivered to the site, which was 100 grand higher than we anticipated as one of the items. That didn't include some of the other costs. I'm happy to. We understand the the costs and I'm happy to go into any of those in detail. Did that answer your first question? The second question is, what is a traditional splash pad or like the ones that you have out there right now, which is just a circle of pavement with three to five vertical pipe looking things that drops water, maybe have some buckets. Could probably reduce the cost by 50%. We have many more bubblers, lighted systems, natural rock. And this nice play feature that is the rundle or reel or channel that flows through that really is one of the hot items that we've seen children playing in. This really has been designed as a premier showpiece for your for Salina. We designers might have, we definitely designed a very creative environment for for Salina for many, many years and a maintenance package that really will support its development for many years. So again, we divide designers heard we want it bigger. We want it, you know, from 2,000 2,100 square feet, which is one of yours to 3,000. And the water wall, we wanted 80 feet and taller and bigger. We took some of that, we ran with it and for that you have a premier design at a at a price that's hard to stomach, but is really what we believe it's worth. And so again, we we heard and then took that. And through the very rapid design process, we're not able to keep up with the costs. But responding to what we understood the communities and needs were. So for that. We has brought us to where we are, but it really is a game changer for your community if you're so interested.
Other questions?
I guess my thought with this breakdown is this is a park. When we initially talked about this, we talked about breaking it into phases. And I think that's the direction I'm going in is to break it into phases. And it is a park dedicated to the memorial of law enforcement. And I would be in favor of moving forward with would we have to rebid the whole thing? If we just went forward with one element?
Which element are you referring?
Law enforcement memorial.
I think that depends on the structure of the bid and the bidder's receptivity to that. I don't know that I can answer that question for you on the spot.
Some of the design from that is more of a continuous sidewalk layout. You go from kind of one to the I don't know if they were then necessarily dependent on each other being there, but it would still leave a large area. And attend, I agree, we should definitely have the memorial park. I thought the plans for that were really nice.
What was your opinion on lack of bidders? Is it the timeline?
That the the timeline was definitely expressed by everybody, including the bidder that 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 we were being ambitious for sure. We also heard from other bidders that were talking to the locals who could provide a more cost effective labor and not have to house their their workers, contractors. So a few of them or two of them specifically were scared away by the fact that the the winning bidder was here locally and could be more cost advantageous for being here local. So they had looked at it and then decided not to because of your local contractor that 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 provided the bid.
Of course, they wouldn't have known they were bidding at that point, would they?
They were calling Smokey Hill for sure and asking about, you know, what their strategy, would they team together, whatever. And so we definitely heard feedback that they were all talking.
There was a pre-construction or a pre-bid meeting that people were invited to. So they were able to see who was who was involved in the pre-bid meeting.
Correct. December 5th.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but if we're willing to revisit the timeline, we could break this apart into individual elements and add alternates and see if we could get more than one bidder and see if that generates competitive pricing, more more competitive pricing. And also by creating ad alternates, when we see the pricing, kind of try to address the scope of the project by selecting alternates.
So we 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 provided alternates to try to hedge a bet on what this was going to cost. We, you know, our final, you know, construction estimate did not cost include, you know, contingencies and stuff like that. I don't think it's the lack of alternates that was the the issue here. We always can show future alternates. It really is the size of the footprint, the size of the wall, the size of the splash pad, the number of amenities. And to not discourage people from thinking that we're fly to hand. We're going to need to dramatically reduce the size of both of those amenities to get on budget and to encourage other people. You know, again, our race was to try to get kids in the water in June 15th. This contractor said we can do that within this environment. But any push beyond tonight, we lose that opportunity. We're looking into perhaps one month at the end of the summer to be open with a new design, which is what other splash pads have been able to do. Hey, is we want to use the summer for our construction sequence and get open maybe for one month before we shut down, just to show the the community what's available. So again, that was our race. I think we created an environment where we can have people in water if we wanted to. But any any changes to rebid, we need to substantially reduce the size of everything to meet budget and then allow contractors to work all summer long.
You'd earlier had said, you know, a traditional splash pad would be perhaps 50% of of what the current splash pad. And I'm guessing that that the pump house, I'm going to call it for lack of a better term, is 327,000. I'm guessing that's considerably more expensive also because we're pushing a lot more water because of the waterfall and everything else. Would that be?
No, the the amount of the that includes a 3,000 gallon reservoir, which can support a lot of different things. So that whether we're running both the wall and splash pad or just one, the vault and the size of pumps will all be the same. So that no, no changes. Again, the the system promoted was a very easily maintained, lots of above ground equipment, other systems that we've generally see are putting a lot of that underground. So you're maintaining your equipment by kneeling or getting in underground enclosed spaces.
So when we look at the breakdown of the elements, the million three for the splash pad includes the 327,000. Okay, so when you said it would be approximately 50% to do a basic splash pad, are you talking half of the million three or are you talking half of the million three minus the three? Half of the million three. Okay, and that would include the pump house. Okay.
Excuse it. It's I'm sorry for not and I should say this out loud. Yes, we're showing we created a very creative premier environment for 1.3 million that includes this system to really cut to a traditional splash pad. Both we would lose the current filtration system that's we shown and we'd go to more like a hydro vac system or some other underground system. Plus reduce the scale of splash pad to more of a concrete with vertical structures to get us to more that 500 to 650,000 dollar range. That matches more of what you've have built right now.
I'm assuming it would be more reasonable to build the splash pad and the water wall at the same time just as far as the piping and pumps, I mean, just.
We designed both to be separate or combined. The reason for that is then one could be on while the other one's not. So like during the fall, winter, spring, we could have the water wall on, but not necessarily have kids playing in the water. So they are designed separately or together, like they do share the same pump systems like we talked about. So the reason the splash pad is 1.3 million is because it has all of that infrastructure within it and the water wall is only 300 some thousand dollars. I mean, our initial estimates were that the water wall would be 650. And so again, if you put the the pump systems in with the water, we were probably right on expectations for the wall a year ago.
But if you broke that into phases and they come in and build the splash pad, leave, come back three months later and build the water wall, that's going to cost more money, right?
We would definitely want to make sure the contractor has our underground plumbing ready so that it's a plug and play kind of thing. There's definitely advantage advantages of doing it all. One, you're not trying to build right next to an occupied playground splash pad, you know, and or having to turn off the splash pad while you're building that wall for three months and it's system. So just by having one construction site, not having to fence it separate areas off. There's definitely reasons to do it all at once, but we have created flexibility to to support it differently if you would like.
Just a question to fellow commissioners, is it the scope that's causing the hesitancy or the price? Or say the price all at once?
Yeah, definitely say the price.
The price for spread out, which you wouldn't feel better. I mean, it's expensive.
What do you mean by, I guess, define what you mean by spread out?
Well, I mean, writing a check for $2 million now or writing a check for $400,000 for the next five years. I mean, plus interest, but. I mean, just like our baseball fields, I mean, we're 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 getting premier baseball fields. We could build a field that looks like the ones we have for a lesser price.
My my frustration is is again, I was the one that voted no on this to begin with because I just wanted a splash pad that would be, we knew we could get implemented to be used this summer because we missed last summer at Jerry Ivy and it appears that we're going to have issues. I mean, we either spend this money or we're probably going to miss 2025 at Jerry Ivy also.
No, if no, we could, if it was built with this plan, it would be ready for 2025.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that's way over the budget that we had even talked about, which was over the budget that I was comfortable with, so.
Yeah, I recall you weren't that comfortable even with that budget.
But now was that just for the splash pad or was that for the other two features as well?
That was for the other features. I was I was I was comfortable spending the 700 or 500. I guess we're talking 500 to 700,000 potentially for a splash pad.
What about for the memorial?
Memorial to me is a whole different subject. You can do that separately of the water feature without any problem, except for connecting sidewalks or whatever. But but we're now, because of the price, we're not even talking about connecting sidewalks. If you do the if you do the 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 water wall and the splash park, you're leaving out the you're leaving out the lighting, the pull, you know, the lighting, pedestrian walk, all that.
And I think that's where I come back to. I feel we should break this apart, break this into phases and like we had talked about and rebid the project. I'm just not comfortable with a single bid.
I'd be comfortable with a single bid if it was closer to what we were anticipating.
Yeah.
But when it doubles it and and nothing against Smokey Hill, I don't know if not sure what caused the the bid to double over what we were anticipating.
And I, you know, I feel obligated because when we filled in the the pond, we pretty much committed. We were going to replace, bring some kind of water feature back. And but at what price?
I committed to a splash pad.
One other consideration that I just want to make sure you're aware of is we have two other spray grounds in our system. And so they don't necessarily need to be at this scale, but in the very near future, I think we're going to be having conversations about replacing additional spray grounds. So we won't be done with. about um, replacing additional spray grounds. So um, we won't be done with the, the, this is an item that we have yet to develop a capital improvement plan, a replacement schedule, a life cycle. And frankly, Jerry Ivy, we weren't planning on replacing this playground until it broke down last summer and it caught us by surprise.
Was, was it the oldest in the uh, park system in terms of spray grounds?
I believe so. Um, Jerry Ivy was done around 2007, I believe, and the Hawthorne and Centennial were done a few years after that.
So yeah, I guess we need to get a replacement, like we've done with playground equipment.
You, you know, I'm all about that, but we, we hadn't got this one on our uh, punch list.
Well, it's such a seasonal, was it four months there in use?
Four months, yeah. Yeah, May through September. So five months.
Well, I kinda like uh, Mr. Schusler suggested extending that, that timeframe, rebidding it, extending it, and maybe getting that last month of service out of it. Uh, right now, I'm, I'm, I think pushing it is uh.
That would sound like a reasonable compromise.
All the bidding expense to go back to the drawing board and start over too, is that under the design and engineering part of it? Are we looking at another hundred grand for that or?
Can we get that on the record as well?
I'm happy to say no.
We didn't, we didn't hear you shaking your head.
I'm here.
On the point of soliciting private uh, donations towards this?
Hmm, no, not at all. I think there's, there would be an opportunity there. Um, typically, we have those secured before we commit to the expenditure, but um, and this, I, I apologize for bringing this up completely out of the blue, but this, this may be an opportunity for a design bid approach where you just kind of spec in general what it is we have in mind and contractors and vendors put together a proposal for our, our consideration and we identify a, a budget and see what they can come up with.
Well, and I, I come back, I'm in favor of splitting this into phases and extending the timelines and rebidding it.
Well, could those two proposals be combined?
We definitely need to extend the timeline if we're gonna look at alternatives and then uh, if, what, what I'm hearing from you is a commitment that you want a spray ground, you want as much quality as we can afford, but the sticker shock over this price and relative to where we started and relative to the original estimates when we put it out to bid. And beyond that, I, it's just gonna take more brainstorming.
From listening to fellow commissioners and, and staff, I guess, are we looking at, at five, at basically rejecting the bid and taking it up at a future date? I mean, I think we're gonna have to give guidance to staff as to.
I, I think you possibly are. I, I think we need to be clear and I, I need to look to staff and, and uh, our designer, just to clarify, I, I think it, there's nothing wrong with taking that option. I think that does mean we're, we're not gonna have it built in 2025 and we're regrouping to try to find some quality and cost effectiveness. And help you through the scope conversation some more.
Well, are, are we in option number three? Cause option three does give us the ability to.
I had option four highlighted.
Well, I was trying to, yeah, cause we are basically rejecting and if we're not voting on it. Um, uh, so the scope of work, I guess, if we were looking at either design, bid and build and phasing, but that, that would be, even if the scope of work was the same, it would be a different construction approach.
I suppose, I suppose if you, what I think I'm really hearing you say is option four, but for rebidding. Reject the base bid and project elements that have been received and instruct staff to reexamine the scope of work, project timeframe, dead, deadlines, et cetera.
Yeah.
I think personally, if I had my choice, I would bid the splash pad and the water wall feature together with maybe an extended timeline if that could knock some money off that. Police officer memorial could be an all add as well. I mean, we have a memorial there and in my mind right now, we, we gotta get something for the, the kids and the families with the, the splash pad. And I still like the idea of a whole concept and I think if you're gonna build it, you might as well do it all at one time versus bringing the crews in and out and costing more money.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. But I think the, having it ready for next spring and summer is pushing it.
That's if doing the water wall and the splash pad, but on a, a slower time, if, if that would reduce the cost?
I mean, if it significantly reduces the cost, I mean, if it does, then.
Unfortunately, there's uh, unless as subject matter experts, they're wanting to offer an opinion on the spot, we, I don't know that we know that answer till we turn the drill again.
So would that be option three or option four? What Commissioner Ivy just proposed?
I think it's four.
Yeah, I think so too.
We'd be rebidding it.
Yeah. Right? Make a motion and see where it goes.
You gentlemen have anything to add? Based on our conversation?
But we're basically gonna miss the 2025 season.
Uh, yes.
It appears.
Yeah.
I feel like going through this process, we've come on, across a lot of different things that you'd like with the design and, and the three different components. I feel like if we could go back to the drawing board, um, and maybe as soon as January 13th, show you a scaled down version of all diff- all three components, the water wall, the splash pad and the memorial, um, kind of get your blessing in January. We could try to rebid this in February with a scaled down version of the three components. We surely could add the memorial as an alternate. Um, uh, if, if the intention is to, you know, cut um, $500,000 on a job, we probably could maintain a lot of the integrity of your ideas, um, but just a smaller version of that and, and bid it in February and really get more, they would have a better construction sequence during the summer and still have it open uh, like other parks uh, that last month of the year. Um, so I, I'm just saying as designers, we can scale down uh, and, and work gets back out to bid if that's your desire. If it's a total um, redo, then, then, then we really have lost to 2025.
I wouldn't scale down the memorial park. I think that was nice the way it was done. I don't know if you could scale that down.
Well, and you're not gonna save that much money on that. Yeah. The memorial's not, it's the water feature that's the, the big price tag that we need to address.
So what I think, if you're open to it, we pursue it, what he just described, and if that's not successful, then we probably are re-scoping and, and beyond 2025. But uh, we're essentially coming back to you as quickly as we can with more detail and
Is the splash pad something that would be eligible for naming rights under our policy?
I don't think anything's eligible that he, as a governing body, are open to it. But yes, I, I believe so, yeah.
The Trent and Pam Davis.
Well, I had a few other last names in mind, but unless you want a real long extended payment plan.
I, I do think that what is designed is, is impressive and it would be, it would, the sponsor would get value out of sponsoring it. Um, cause I think it'll be well received as designed.
Cause I think that would really be something we should explore. I mean, uh, cause I agree. I mean, for something with pop and appeal, I mean, that's it. Yeah.
I mean, for your consideration, we could just extend the, the bid and for 30 days. Does that give you time to have those conversations?
I guess I have to defer.
It's, it's normally valid for 60 days, so.
Okay.
And if, if the question is sponsored.
All right. Sponsorship, I, we can certainly get the word out. We're, we are right here in the holidays, which makes it a little awkward, but um, i- in all honesty, I think what you really want us to do is one of everything. Um, see what the interest there is in sponsorship, see what we can do in terms of uh, coming back to you with a revised scope and then it, it, as he described, uh, and then it, give you a little bit more detail if we said 2025's out and we're gonna completely regroup, what that might look like.
Yeah. So.
I, I think if you took option four and threw, and I also instructed staff to investigate the possibility of, of sponsorships. Um, I, I'm trying to read you as a collective group, but I think that keeps all your options open.
It's, it's just a lot of money. I'm sitting here trying to think how, you know, how to, what would be best as far as funding this if, you know, if we, you know, what, what dollar amount would I be comfortable in, and what type of funding, you know, whether we're, how we're funding it over time or, and stuff. I just, I just struggle with the, you know, with the 1.9 million and we're not getting some of the features that I liked we talked about last time, which is the, the lighted walkways, which tied the memorial into the water park, the, you know, uh, the new, the upgraded sidewalks, which I think we need over there. So I think we're, we're trying to force this, but I think we're still missing some of the key elements that really finalize the park.
Well, there may be different sponsors for the water feature. I mean, the, the splash pad and the, and another group of sponsors who would contribute to the memorial. I mean, there may be two different groups of, of sponsors out there, so.
And again, we, you know, we, we have funds available. We've done a good job with our budgeting process, but I'm not at this point ready to pull the trigger on using some of those. I mean, I think we need to have that discussion maybe in a budgeting process, you know, at our, when we do our, our budgeting for the next year.
Well, I don't want to delay the other project, the other park projects.
I, I don't know if this would do this, and again, I apologize for jumping into your conversation too much, but you know, if you said, staff, can you find the funds? I mean, we can find the funds, but it's, to me, it's more of a value proposition for you.
Yeah, that's my problem. We can fund it. I just have a problem with.
This particular item.
I have a problem spending a million nine and still not getting the finished project, product that we talked about last time. And that's, you know, I, I voted no the first time. I voted yes last time because I saw the project and we were talking about a, a million one project. I thought, okay, it's more than I wanted to spend, but I thought we were getting a prod, product that was gonna enhance the park. And now I'm not sure we're getting all that because we're not finishing the little details that make the project what we wanted it to be. So at this point, I, we either need to do three or four, I guess, and. And I'm still not hap- I'm still not happy that we won't have a water feature in 2025, so.
This is, and not to make excuses, but it, it, we were focused on replacing the pond till the spray ground broke down and, and then this is a, this is not an off the shelf type item like certain, some things are. We're trying to vision and meet goals and meet a budget. And predict what the market's gonna quote us.
Um, if we do, I look at legal counsel, if we do number three, it says to specified date, do we need to give you that specified date tonight?
I would, I would think yes. Uh, two reasons. One, to make sure staff is aware of what the expectation is and also from the uh, bidder's standpoint. Uh, I don't know the precise date that the bid expires, but uh, it would seem in everyone's interest if uh, there's desire to leave the bid open, to be sure that that uh, consideration is scheduled at a time that's within the current.
I'm looking at staff. January 13th is our organizational meeting, is January 27th too soon? I have no idea. I have no idea what we're doing.
If we're trying to stay in the 2025 timeline, yeah, I, if anything, I mean, I think that it was some willingness to try to hit January 13th. If you're willing to take it up on what would be your organizational meeting, um, it's kind of a meaty topic. If you put it off much further, it just makes 2025 that much more questionable.
I guess as much as I want it, I'm, I'm not as worried about the 2025 deadline. I'm, I'm more worried about it being done right and looking good. I mean, we're not gonna have Mattson Field in 2024. I mean, uh, some things occurred unexpectedly and, and uh, you know, there'll be a delay. I mean, a splash pad is not something that you keep an extra one of in your, in your garage and you just go put another one in.
I, I think we're pro, we're trying to keep that 2025, 25 option in the conversation as long as possible. Doesn't necessarily mean that we end up on the 13th and making what might be an imprudent decision. It's just an opportunity to get you some more information between now and then.
Well, and I'm also wondering how much information you can get or, cause half of that time is holiday season, vacations and.
Have to earn a GPA on that one.
That's why I think the 27th is probably a more realistic date.
And most people who come to that organizational meeting probably don't wanna sit through a long discussion like this.
We did Star Bonds one year, but I'm not saying that was a good idea.
Where are we at on removing the old splash pad? Is that, that wasn't part of the scope of this bid, was it?
I'm sorry, sir.
Removing the old?
It was not, uh, we were doing that in-house.
Okay. So that's in process?
Uh, it's, uh, it has a, a contractor or a purchase order associated with it. Uh, we have a contractor lined up, but uh, it's not happened yet.
Okay.
We were planning for January.
Well, I, yeah, I think if we're gonna be pushing this out, I would like to see the existing old not be visible so people don't pull up and be disappointed.
No, it was on our schedule in January to get it done.
Okay.
So in light of your comments and if you want to keep the, the possibility of the bid open, then number three, postponing versus rejecting does keep your options fully intact.
And that would still give our consultant the opportunity to look at all the other issues that we've.
Yes.
Discussed.
Yep.
And I'm not, I'm gonna make a motion here, but I'm not gonna provide your direction. I think you've got, we've got you going a hundred percent. So I'm not sure what direction.
Hold on because I'd like to have public comment.
Yeah, we have to public comment, I'm sorry.
Get some totally new ideas.
Ben Winholz Salina, um, when the pond was first uh, filled in, uh, Commissioner Hoppeck was against anything that was going to be um, affiliated with a water feature, uh, just because, and I agreed with him because of the fact that we have a river renovation coming on and we're gonna be spending multi, multi, multi millions of dollars for that. Also, you need to look at the big picture. Um, the park department can barely take care of the water features they have now. I'm not talking about the spark, the splash pads. I'm talking things like Lakewood. Um, it's not being taken care of. So you, you have another water feature that you have to take care of, uh, all on the, all on the park. So you've got maintenance and cost attributed to that completely down the road. So I don't see why you don't do the splash pad. Um, take out all of the plug and play plumbing, uh, that would be in for the water feature. Completely take the water feature out. Keep the memorial in there and then you can get it done on your timeline and possibly with rebidding, then um, shave off. And, and in your, he already told you that you were getting a bells and whistles Cadillac type project with this. So um, scale it down, uh, maybe a little bit better than what was there before, uh, to make the public happy. Uh, take out the water feature, uh, put in the memorial and um, be done with it. And this way. And this way, parks can take care of what they had to take care of before and not have another feature because they couldn't take care of the pond that was there before and they can't take care of Lakewood. So what's to say that they're going to take care of this one?
I wanted to give the Smokey Hill opportunity to speak if you'd like.
I don't really have anything to say. Ask your questions if you wish. Well, didn't hear my comment.
Kim Brown, Smokey Hill Construction President. The only thing I would have to say is that I do not, would not be agreeable to just extending the bid thirty, sixty days, whatever. And our proposal still in, be in place. Because we were planning to, if it was approved tonight, to get started tomorrow, to get everything going so that we could get everything done by June. The, yes, we have a original contract that says we have to keep it so long. But when I submitted a alternate proposals to me that I did not say, we just do not allow that extension. But that's, would be our take on the thing that we cannot get it done by June if we extend the consideration phase thirty to sixty days.
And that would be one hundred percent understood because there's a $200 a day fine in there. I'm going to, I'm not going to make you wait sixty days and then try to.
Well, but yes, and plus the $200 a day, that really isn't the cost.
Right, but right.
To get it done, we have to have special people doing special things, really moving things along.
We agree a hundred percent. I understand that.
I just don't like to be, you didn't say anything at the meeting, so thank you.
I want to note, you've been collaborative with us as we've tried to sort this out. So we need to, we want to continue that.
And, and to follow up on, on Mr. Winhold's comments, you know, when we started talking about this, I did make the comment, water features are expensive to maintain. And one of the things that bothered me when we're looking at the overall aesthetics of the, of the project is, you know, one of the alternates we're leaving out is the landscaping around the water feature, which would make it look nice. But I had an issue with that because when we were looking at the park's master plan, the, the matrix, four of the priorities were moved due to staff capacity to care for additional plannings. So here we are, we have four parks that we're not doing something in because we don't have additional, enough staff to take care of that. And here we are trying to add more to this project if we were to do it correctly. So we've got a lot of things to think about.
Should also note that, you know, a lot of the public sentiment was to have a replacement water feature. That was near and dear to a lot of people, at least who I heard from, a water feature of some type. I don't know if you'd asked them to, whether the water feature was more important to them or splash pad for their grandkids, which one they would have chosen, but they want a place where you can go take wedding pictures and family reunion pictures and, you know, something soothing about, about water. So that, that is a very important feature for a lot of, a lot of adults and probably young folks out on dates as well. So it's, it's, you know, it's not something that is not important. I don't want to just throw something out to make people happy. I want to make them, you know, proud. Take a picture, send it across the country. Well, this is what you have in Salina, Kansas. But at a decent cost, too.
Any other public comment? Okay, I, I feel like we have consensus here.
Yeah, I think to Commissioner Hoppeck's point, if you want to make a motion to postpone without a detailed direction, I think we do have consensus and staff.
Mayor Longbine, I move we postpone consideration of the bid and instruct staff to conduct further research and report back on January twenty seventh, twenty twenty five regarding additional information or amendments that we would like to see per our prior discussion.
I'll second that.
I have a motion, a second, to postpone consideration of the bid and instruct staff to conduct further research and report back on January twenty seventh, twenty twenty five and provide staff direction regarding additional information or amendments. The city commission would like to request for further consideration. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries five zero. Thank you, gentlemen. Developmental business, item six point one.
Item six point one, consider approval of resolution number two four dash eight two six nine, authorizing preparation and submittal of a historic economic asset lifeline grant for the Island Apartments project.
Ms. Driscoll.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. We are talking today about a property we talked about a few weeks ago, located at one oh one North Santa Fe Avenue, formerly the old Lang Zein location, the antique shop. As we talked about a few weeks ago, that building is currently working through a project where the first floor would have an indoor playground or play place. The second floor would have six apartments and possibly a rooftop location that may have a restaurant or bar or something like that. But today we're focusing, and as we have been focusing on, is the first and second floor. This grant is through Department of Commerce. It's called the HEAL grant. As mentioned, it's the Historic Economic Asset Lifeline. This grant would be the first time we've applied for this grant through commerce. It does hit two of the main objectives that the community has had over the last five plus years, both strategically working on the improvements for our downtown. You know, as many of us are aware, we went through significant streetscape improvements, have done Star Bond and brought in a variety of new businesses and anchor tenants to make our downtown a vital place for the community. This project is intended to stay with that theme and bring other new uses to the community. We've also focused on housing and adding new units to our community. This project would also have six new units of affordable housing that would be part of it. So specifically, the HEAL program is about preserving and bringing new economic activity to underutilized vacant or dilapidated downtown buildings in rural communities. I think this project fits that bill very well. It will focus on construction of the overall structure itself and also on facade improvements, being the front facing or visible part of the building. And businesses that can be part of that may include childcare, housing, arts, culture, civic engagement and entrepreneurship. So ticking all the boxes there is part of the grant requirements. It can be applied for by either nonprofits or local governments. So in this case, the city would be applying on behalf of that building. And the HEAL program has specifications within it that have been included in the attachment, but mainly focused around community characteristics such as population size. We have to have an associated Main Street program and certain construction timelines and material types need to be used. So this project will meet those requirements as needed by the state. Eligible grant expenses through this program include up to $30 per square foot with an award maximum for general construction of $100,000 and then for facade construction of $40,000. So overall, this project is asking for that max amount of $140,000. It's a large building, so they can max out that square footage. Applications need to be submitted through, through us and would go to the state. This is round five of this particular grant. It should be noted that already this program has given away $5 million. There's 1.5 million available in this round. The program's a little different. It actually doesn't come from traditional taxpayer dollars, whether they're local or state. This is actually a partnership with Patterson Family Foundation. So the dollars within this grant program are from a foundation. So that's where those monies come from. This grant will be, will need to be submitted by January tenth, twenty twenty five in order to make this funding cycle, which is why it's in front of you today. And if we do not, and you choose not to move forward with the resolution, then it would not make the round five of applications. As noted, this current request is to deal with the renovations of the first and second floor primarily, and then the third floor for that structure. Resolution twenty four eighty two sixty nine is in front of you, asking for that $140,000 of support. And the city will not be required to do any matching funds on this. And as the administrators, on behalf of the application, staff has estimated two to five hours a month would be used to manage this, which is not out of the ordinary for us and very doable. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions. The applicant is also here to represent themselves. And you can either approve this resolution, you could approve the resolution with amendments or further direction to staff postpone, or vote to deny the resolution.
Questions? Applicant, have any comments?
She's good.
I had one question either. I guess I want to hear your name again.
Jessica Petro Sakuma.
You're going to have to write that down for me. Is there a timeline for completion on this project?
So we've had issues just with the drawings and blueprints because it is such an old building and trying to figure out where we can get plumbing, electrical mechanics to go through feasibly. We should have a hundred percent completion blueprints by first of the year. We just got our seventy five this, seventy five percent this last week. So we're hoping to open before winter of next year. So winter twenty twenty five for both the apartments and the children's indoor playground.
Okay, thank you. It's interesting to watch the progress.
Yes.
It's a big project, so.
Since you're up here, I'm going to ask, what are your plans for that rooftop?
So tentatively, that's what we consider phase three. We're pushing to do a rooftop bar. It'll have an area, a raised area for live music. There won't be any food. It'll just be a full bar, beer and wine, that kind of thing. And then ideally, we would be able to entertain the idea of renting it as a venue for different things, for, you know, weddings or receptions or anything like that.
It's exciting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I see the rooftop get utilized, but it's not anything we have yet, so.
Be the first. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any public comment? I'll bring this back for action.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of resolution number twenty four dash eighty two six nine and approve submittal of the HEAL grant application and authorize the city manager to accept an associated grant agreement at a future date.
Second. I have a motion, a second, to approve resolution number two four dash eight two six nine and approve submittal of a HEAL grant application and authorize the city manager to accept an associated grant agreement at a future date. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item six point two A.
Item six point two concerns the proposed development at the west end of Bacta Court with six point two A being to consider approval of ordinance number two four dash one one two three one, rezoning the interstate district southwest of I-70 addition number two to the city of Salina.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Bacta Court is an east-west street that extends west from North Ninth Street and runs south of and parallel to I-70. And the property that we're discussing this evening is at the west end of where that street terminates. And Bacta Construction Incorporated, owned by Roger Bacta, is the current owner of the property. That property's actually been inside the city limits since nineteen seventy one, but it's unplatted and zoned for agricultural purposes. It's also located in the mapped floodway of Mulberry Creek, which makes developing it more complicated. The property is currently vacant. It was formerly occupied by a farmhouse and outbuildings. Those buildings were damaged in the two thousand seven flood and were removed from the property. Although, as I mentioned, this property's in the map floodway from Mulberry Creek. Mr. Bacta has seen the construction activity going on with Comfort Inn and Suites and a future motel development to the east on Bacta Court. And he sees a property that has potential for future highway oriented commercial development. To do this, that would require extension of Bacta Court and also extension of the public utility lines that serve the motel projects. So the, dating back to two thousand nineteen, Mr. Bacta filed three applications in the spring of two thousand nineteen. And one of those was a request to amend the comprehensive plan that showed this as a conservation area and amend it to be a, shown as a commercial area. He filed an application, the application is before you this evening, to rezone this property from agricultural to C seven highway commercial. And he submitted a preliminary plat to create two commercial building lots. The Planning Commission reviewed those applications in May of two thousand nineteen. And they recommended that the future land use map be amended and also recommended approval of the zoning change to C seven subject to satisfactory plating of the property. And those recommendations went to the city commission on June tenth, two thousand nineteen. The city commission agreed to the change to the future land use map to show this as commercial. And they approved an ordinance on first reading subject to satisfactory plating of the property. And so that first reading has been sitting out there for five years now. And one of the conditions on the Planning Commission's approval of the preliminary plat was that the developer obtain something from KDOT in writing, authorizing the construction of, the wording there was Coach Light Lane, because that was the name at the time, or obtain a quitclaim deed from KDOT prior to final plat approval. And so as we indicated there, KDOT, not only initially, but seemingly consistently, declined to quitclaim title of the frontage road over either to Mr. Bacta or the city. And then when they did agree to do so, there were numerous delays within the right of way bureau of getting a deed to the city. And so our ordinance requires that you complete plating within twelve months of preliminary approval. And obviously, Mr. Bacta was not able to do that because he couldn't fulfill the condition that was needed to extend Bacta Court. So in September of this year, thanks to persistent efforts of the city manager, we finally got a quitclaim deed from KDOT. And that allowed Mr. Bacta's project to move forward. So staff reactivated all of his applications and his applications were resubmitted for a public hearing and advertised for Planning Commission review. And so we essentially took the zoning, the preliminary plat and the final plat and brought them back before the Planning Commission on December third. And so on this particular item, your role is to determine whether you think this property is more suitable for commercial development than continued agricultural use. And so the Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing on this. They did vote unanimously to make the same recommendation they did in two thousand nineteen, which was to rezone this from agricultural to highway commercial. And the findings they provided are on the bottom of page eight of your report. And they did think that this was suitable for commercial development due to its proximity and orientation to I-70. It has been placed in the city's neighborhood revitalization area. And certainly, the A one zoning inhibits development of the property. The other thing that's occurred since then is that Mr. Bacta has hired an engineering firm who has concluded that it's feasible to develop a portion of this site and still conform with FEMA floodway regulations. And so there is C seven zoning directly to the east on Bacta Court. This would be an extension of that. The utilities and streets would be an extension of what's already there. And the C seven zoning would be consistent with the comprehensive plan as amended. And so as it relates to the zoning, your options this evening would be to concur with the findings and recommendation of the Planning Commission and approve ordinance twenty four eleven two thirty one. the findings and recommendation of the Planning Commission and approve Ordinance 2411231. You could disagree with the recommendation of the Planning Commission and return this item to them and summarize the reasons for your disagreement, and that would go back before the Planning Commission. You can postpone consideration of this application if there's some information you feel is missing that the staff or applicant could provide for you, or you could overturn the recommendation and deny the application filed by Mr. Bacta. And you would need four votes in support of that denial and would need to come up with some alternative findings that would support that denial. So, this comes to you with a recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission. I did want to point out that the ordinance that's before you is somewhat unique. I had to have discussions with the city attorney about how we dealt with the 2019 ordinance that was still out there. And so, there's a section of the ordinance that deals with summarizing what happened in 2019. And so, the result of your action tonight would be the ordinance from 2019 that was approved on first reading would be of no force and effect, and this would be the effective ordinance on the property. So, with that, I'd be open to any questions you have. Mr. Bacta is here in person, I think. He's still here. And you can address any questions you have to him about his project.
Questions for Mr. Andrew.
I apologize for the length of the packet, but I was somewhat impressed going back and looking at how many steps Mr. Bacta had taken with getting all the floodway issues addressed. And it's a testament to him and his engineers that he has both local, state, and FEMA approval for his project. He just doesn't have the zoning for it.
Thank you. Does the applicant have any comments?
No, in fact, I don't have any.
Is there any public comment? Bring this back for action.
Mayor Longbine, I find that the City Commission concurs with the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission, and therefore, we should approve Ordinance Number 24-11231 rezoning the proposed interstate district southwest of I-70 addition number two from A-1 agricultural to C-7 highway commercial.
Second. Have a motion as second to accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission, Ordinance Number 24-11231 rezoning the proposed interstate district southwest of I-70 addition number two from A-1 agriculture to C-7 highway commercial. And we need a roll call.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ivey?
Aye.
Commissioner Lenkowitz?
Aye.
Mayor Longbine?
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Item 6.2B.
Item 6.2B is to consider authorizing the mayor to sign the final plat of the interstate district southwest of I-70 addition number two on behalf of the city.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As I noted before, the same property, Mr. Bacta is proposing to subdivide that into three lots, one of which would be a very large combination detention and flood storage area, and then he's proposing to develop two commercial lots. And as we noted, there was originally a preliminary layout that was approved in 2019, and it was approved subject to getting it platted within 12 months of preliminary City Commission approval, and because of the delays associated with acquiring title to the frontage road, all the prior approvals from Mr. Bacta's plans had expired, and he is starting over. But, as I noted, he's wanting to create two commercial lots, with the third lot to the south would be compensatory floodway storage for Mulberry Creek and also serve as detention for his project. There are two variations that went before the Planning Commission in 2019 and at their last meeting, and those are the fact that the current Bacta Court is a dead-end street, which is 950 feet long, which exceeds the 600-foot length, and he's proposing to extend that by an additional 200 feet, but also to construct a cul-de-sac turnaround that it doesn't currently have. And the other variation is because of the property ownership and configuration, the back lot does not have direct access on the cul-de-sac, and so, he requested a variation from the requirement that all his lots have frontage on an approved public or private street. And those variations were approved by the Planning Commission as part of the preliminary plat of the property. So, the primary changes on the plat that's before you from what we had in 2019 is because of the quitclaim deed going from KDOT to the city. The subdivision boundary is now expanded to the north to incorporate a portion of the property deeded to the city. The city is now a party to the plat and would be accepting the dedications and also signing as one of the owners. And then, Coach Light Lane has been renamed by City Commission Action to Bacta Court. And so, the Planning Commission, I guess the other thing I would want to note is because of the city's ownership, the way we have identified the public ownership is that we have, instead of having right-of-way for Bacta Court, the city-owned portion is going to be identified as public way, which would still allow it to be used for street and utility uses, but would not be dedicated as a public right-of-way, but simply as a public way, and the city would maintain the title status that it has of that property. The other thing that that does is by the city retaining ownership, we allow for access around the north end of the subdivision to get to the farm ground to the west, and that was one of the original purposes of the KDOT frontage road because the farmhouse and farm ground used to have access from Diamond Drive, and that got cut off by the interstate. And so, the Planning Commission reviewed this final subdivision plat and approved the plat as proposed with a number of conditions that are highlighted on Page Six of your report. So, your action this evening would be to consider a motion to accept the offered right-of-way utility and drainage easement dedications on the plat and to authorize the mayor to sign the plat on behalf of the city. In the alternative, you could approve a motion to decline to accept the offered dedications and return this plat to the Planning Commission stating your reasons for not wanting to accept those. So, we have provided in your packet the preliminary plat drawing with the grading contours, and again, the grading is already complete on this property, and building pads have been elevated, and the elevated building pads have been approved by FEMA. And so, this final plat would allow Mr. Bacta to install his infrastructure. The only thing I cannot say with certainty, and he could probably indicate this evening, is I don't, we did not discuss, and I don't know whether he's going to seek the use of special assessment financing that, but there will be public water line, public sewer line, and a public street extension. But with that, I'll be open to any questions.
Questions? Thank you. Does applicant have any comment on this item? Is there any public comment? Bring this back for action.
Mayor, I move to authorize you to sign the final plat of the interstate district southwest of I-70 addition number two on behalf of the city.
Second. Have a motion as second to authorize the mayor to sign the final plat of the interstate district southwest of I-70 addition number two on behalf of the city. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Item 6.3.
Item 6.3 deals with the updated functional street classification map. Item 6.3A is to consider approval of Ordinance Number 24-11232 amending the city's comprehensive plan by adopting an updated functional street classification map.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Every 10 years, KDOT asks cities and counties throughout Kansas to take a look at and consider updating their functional street classification maps, and there's two elements to that. We have our functional street classification map as part of our Salina comprehensive plan. And so, Item 6.3A deals with updating the map that's within the comprehensive plan, and the classification map classifies every street in the city according to its function. And the main ones we're concerned with are major arterials, minor arterials, and collectors, and the remainder of the streets that aren't one of those are just classified as local or residential streets. And so, from a planning standpoint, it's very important how streets are classified in terms of when you're looking at a subdivision plat, how a street is classified will dictate how much right-of-way needs to be dedicated on the plat. It will indicate what the pavement width and design should be for that street, what the speed limit should be under our special assessment, financing policies, the method of financing construction will vary depending on the classification of the street, and then also access control. And just from a daily use from our zoning ordinance, building setbacks, maximum sign sizes, sign setbacks, those are all varied according to what classification the street is. And so, this updated map will be referred to and used frequently in staff reports that planning staff may make. And so, we've provided some reasons why we think it's good to take a look at and update the map, and so, we have done that, and only some minor changes were made. The primary change was that in September, you approved an urban area boundary map for KDOT, which extended the urban area boundaries to the southwest and southeast. And so, this updated map includes classification of streets in that urban area boundary extending to the southeast and the southwest near the airport. So, the Planning Commission reviewed this at their December 3 meeting. They unanimously recommended that the new updated map be adopted as a portion of the comprehensive plan, and that is done through ordinance. And so, if you concur with their findings and recommendations as to the amended and updated map, you should approve Ordinance 2411232 this evening. You could refer this item back to the Planning Commission for additional reconsideration if you disagree with their recommendation, or you could overturn the recommendation of the Planning Commission and decide that the existing 2003, or excuse me, 2015 map should remain in place and to make a motion that the ordinance not be approved. This would again require four affirmative votes, and if that action were taken, then the expanded urban area boundary that you approved in September would not be included on the map. And so, what we provided for you is the 2015 map, the updated map, and then to help me and to help you review that, one of our planners labeled all the different segments that were added to the urban area boundary so you could see how those were classified. So, with that, I'd be open to any questions you have about the updated map.
Questions?
Thank you.
Any public comment? Bring this back for action.
Mayor Longbine, I move that we concur with the findings and recommendation of the Planning Commission and approve Ordinance Number 24-11232 amending and updating the city's functional street classification map of the comprehensive plan.
Second that.
Have a motion as second to concur with the findings and recommendation of the Planning Commission and approve Ordinance Number 24-1123 amending and updating the city's functional street classification map of the comprehensive plan. May we have a roll call?
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ivey?
Aye.
Commissioner Lenkowitz?
Aye.
Mayor Longbine?
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Item 6.3B.
Item 6.3B is to consider approval of Resolution Number 24-8271 updating the city's urban street functional classification system.
Mr. Toich.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Jim Toich, Director of Public Works. I guess I first should say that Debbie just gave me two minutes to present this, so I will be quick. I could start by saying, everything that Dean just told you, ditto. And really, what this blue sheet is for is to authorize the mayor to sign this resolution and allow me to submit that to KDOT, which is a requirement for us to do every 10 years on the fifth year after the census, much like Dean has previously described. For this point, it is worth mentioning that for transportation planning and public policy, for the purposes of what Public Works does, it provides a framework for bridge replacement, surface maintenance, disaster recovery, snow removal, and any other program where funds must be allocated. As you know, every year, we apply for federal funds exchange in which the city requests an exchange of federal funds for 90% of the state funds, and this allows us to continue to do that with streets that qualify and are newly classified. You have the option to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution with amendments, postpone consideration of the resolution, or do not approve and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution. And with that, I would stand for any questions.
Questions? I got an unrelated one. You brought it up.
Uh-oh.
Are you and your crews ready for snow removal?
I believe we are, yes.
Okay, well, your salt budget should be in good shape so far.
And our salt barn is loaded, so.
Do we have inventory?
Yes.
Good, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any public comment? Bring this back for action.
Mayor Longbine, I move we authorize the mayor to sign Resolution Number 24-8271 updating the urban street functional classification systems for the city of Salina.
Second that.
Have a motion as second to authorize the mayor to sign Resolution Number 24-8271 updating the urban street functional classification systems for the city of Salina. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries five zero. And that brings us to the end of a busy agenda and to other business. Anything Commissioners would like to bring up?
Just one thing, probably fitting for the last meeting of the year, but just wanted to let the fellow commissioners know how pleased I was that we could have a nice, open back-and-forth conversation on Issue 5.6, and despite our different approaches to the same problem, come up with something that we voted on five to nothing. So, I think we're figuring the process out. Happy holidays and look forward to working with you next year.
Thank you. Anything else? Well, I want to take this time to wish all the city staff and the citizens of Salina a very Merry Christmas and a happy and prosperous New Year.
Absolutely.
It's amazing how fast the year went, right?
Right.
Citizens forum, if you have a comment on something not on the agenda, please limit your comments to three minutes.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Kim Lacy Hill. On October 1 of this year, I sent all of you an email reference to the breed-specific ban with our pit bulls. ban with our pit bulls. I'm not here to talk about that ban today. However, I am here to bring up some of the other issues that I included in that email that at the last animal shelter advisory meeting, they were validated. Some of those issues included three veterinarians that were at that meeting that verified they have treated animals that had been neglected at our animal shelter. There was three different incidents they brought up during that meeting, two dogs and a cat specifically. Again, what's going on with our pit bulls that are being housed there because of this ban? The other thing involved the attack of one of the volunteers down there. There is now documentation that supports that the staff knew about that dog when they let that volunteer take the dog out to go for a walk. This type of thing, it's unacceptable. It's unacceptable for the animals that are there, for the volunteers, and for all of us. It's not right. Those animals do not have a voice, but I do. And I intend to make my voice loud, strong, and for it to be heard. You know, I didn't get any response from any of you on my email that I sent on October first, and that's fine. I really did not expect one to come. But it's come to a point, something needs to be done. There is things that have been proven. You know, we all are held accountable for our actions, and it's time for shelter staff to start being held accountable. None of us are above what's doing right. So, with that, because I'm watching my clock and my time, as I had several other things to bring up, but something needs to be done, and something needs to be done to protect the animals that are at our shelter. Staff needs to be looked at, but with that, I also intend to take the email that I sent to you all on the first and the information that I have gathered since the last animal shelter advisory meeting and forward to media outlets, because we need help. We need help with here with our shelter, because we've got a real problem with it. And animals are being neglected. Thank you.
Ma'am, what was your first name again?
Kim.
Kim Hill?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'm trying to think of the email. I thought I responded.
Real quick, I know I'm out of time, but when I bring a problem, I also like to bring a possible solution.
Well, thank you for that.
One solution would be putting the animal shelter under the police department. A lot of communities do that. Another plus to having that done is that anybody who works for the animal shelter then would be thoroughly vetted, because it falls under a criminal justice agency, and all of us that work under a criminal justice agency have thorough backgrounds done when we apply for those positions. So, it's kind of a double thing, but I know Cedric County, the animal shelter falls under the police department. And there's a lot of other communities within the state that the animal shelter falls under the police department. So, it's just another solution, or suggestion for a possible solution. But something needs to be done. Our shelter needs to be cleaned up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Wayne Holtz, you coming or not?
Me?
Yeah. We're getting tired.
I'll take three minutes.
Ben Wintles Salina, no, I have nothing. I just wish everybody Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Putting a little plug in for the Garage, Mr. Longbine, or should I say Mayor Longbine, and I were invited to participate in a YouTube video that the Garage has put out as far as explaining who they are, what they're doing, where they're going forward, which includes a lot of downtown. So, you can get on YouTube and see that. If you are a member of the Garage, you were sent an email from Michelle Peck, and she has a link on there for that YouTube video, and I just saw it today. So, Bill and I are kind of, I don't want to say, we're famous on YouTube. Anyway, Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Well, I feel like we're all famous up here every two weeks, so, on YouTube. Okay. No other comments? We have a couple of executive sessions, and I'm sure we're ready for a break. How long?
Well, I assure you, we were prepared to feed you, so I would ask for an hour on the first item.
Okay. You want a five-minute break?
Yeah.
Okay. Mayor Longbine, I move that the City Commission recessed into executive session for one hour following a five-minute break to discuss with legal counsel the subject of legal considerations and points of negotiation related to the city of Salina's current and proposed agreement with the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B two. The open meeting will resume in this room at seven, or eight fifty-five, or at, excuse me, that'd be at?
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock.
I'll second that.
We have a motion as second to recess into executive session for one hour to discuss with legal counsel, legal considerations. We will resume in this meeting at eight o'clock, and that is after a five-minute break. Thank you.
Do we need to vote on that?
No. We got a second?
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, Mayor and Commissioners, some preliminaries here. In addition to yourselves, those in attendance will be myself, City Legal Counsel Greg Bengston, Deputy City Manager Wood, Assistant City Manager Hennessy, Finance Director Pack, yes, there she is. And there is a possibility that you could take public action when you return.
Thank you.
Okay, we are back in session and we are gonna request some more time to discuss items.
Okay. Mayor Longbine, I move the City Commission recess into executive session for 15 minutes to discuss with legal counsel the subject of legal consideration and points of negotiations related to the city of Salinas current and proposed agreements with the Salina area Chamber of Commerce based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 75-4319B2. The open meeting will resume in this room at...
Eight eighteen.
Eight eighteen.
Second.
Okay, we have motioned as second to recess into executive session for 15 minutes and we will resume in this room at eight eighteen. All in favor say aye.
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 Same attendees as before, myself, City Legal Counselman Greg Bankston, Deputy City Major Wood, Assistant City Major Hennessy, Finance Director Pack, and there is the possibility of public action on your part when we return. of public action on your part when we return.
Okay, we are back in session and we have no action to take. So that will bring us to another executive session and...
Mayor?
Yes.
At whatever point it might be appropriate, I do have a request to make in relation to the scheduled executive session. If that's, if that would be now.
Okay.
I realized I kind of interrupted you and I didn't mean to.
Go ahead.
That's why I hesitated. The situation has arisen that I would appreciate an opportunity to speak with you on a matter that relates to the city manager's evaluation, but we're only, the Attorney General tells us that it's a matter of always choosing one justification. So I think the city manager's evaluation is still the correct categorization of the justification for what I need to visit with you about. So the motion is correct as it reads, but this, the component that I would like to speak with you about involves, I think, only about 20 minutes. Recognizing that that might lead to a longer time in terms of the actual full evaluation that I would not be participating in, but, so same motion works if it, if you don't mind, a kind of a preliminary session for about...
You're requesting 20 minutes?
Twenty minutes would take care of it.
Okay, because I was gonna get some input from the commission on how much time they would like. That's what I was thinking was...
Yeah, I think after the 20 minutes then you can have a conversation about whether you need more time.
So the first 20 minutes would not involve discussion on our part then? If that's the case?
Yes.
I would say it looks like we would have 60 minutes total?
Yeah, I think you want to do the first 20 and then decide how much more.
And come back and then we'll come back.
Yeah, that would ascertain the rest of the situation.
All right.
Okay. Mayor Longbine, I move the City Commission recess into executive session for 20 minutes to discuss the city manager's evaluation based upon the need to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel pursuant to KSA 75-4319B1. The open meeting will resume in this room at...
Eight forty-three.
Eight forty-three.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to recess into executive session for 20 minutes to discuss the city manager's evaluation. We will resume in this open session at eight forty-three. And I would also add that the Human Resources Director Natalie Fisher will be in attendance as well.
I don't know that she would need to be for this preliminary discussion. I think those attending other than commissioners would be Mr. Skreg and myself, and that would be the extent of anyone participating.
Okay. So we have motion as second, all in favor say aye.
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 We are back in session and we are going to return to executive session.
Okay, Mayor Longbine, I move the City Commission recess into executive session for 20 minutes to discuss the city manager's evaluation based upon the need to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel. Pursuit it to KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B one. The open meeting will resume in this room at nine.
Nine oh five.
Nine oh five.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in the second to recess into executive session for 20 minutes to discuss city manager's evaluation. And we will resume in this room at nine oh five. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, we are back in session and we do have action to take.
Well, you have the resolution to read.
Okay. I'm gonna read the resolution here and we are all kind of reeling here a little bit, so bear with us. Resolution concluding the twenty twenty-four evaluation of the city manager's performance and review of the city manager's base salary and awarding a merit increase acknowledging the receipt of the voluntary resignation of the city manager, Michael D. Schrag, and agreeing to the city manager's requested employment end date. Be it resolved by the governing body of the city of Salina, Kansas. The governing body has advised staff of its intent to award the city manager with a merit increase of six thousand three hundred and nine dollars, three percent of his base salary of two hundred and ten thousand three hundred and five dollars, resulting in a new base salary of two hundred and sixteen thousand six hundred and fourteen dollars, effective December sixteenth. In accordance with the city manager's anniversary date and evaluation due date noted in his employment contract and that the Director of Human Resources will take such actions as necessary to implement the change. Section two, the governing body acknowledges the receipt of the voluntary resignation of city manager, Michael D. Schrag, this twenty-third day of December twenty twenty-four. Section three, section eleven of the city manager's employment agreement provides that if the city manager voluntary resigns from the position of city manager, the city manager agrees to provide a minimum sixty days notice unless the parties agree otherwise. Mr. Schrag has requested that the governing body agree that he instead provide notice resulting in an employment end date of the close of business on February seventh, twenty twenty-five. The governing body agrees with Mr. Schrag's request resulting in a close of business February seventh, twenty twenty-five, effective date of Mr. Schrag's voluntary resignation as city manager.
Mayor Longbine is with mixed emotions that I move we approve resolution number twenty-four dash eighty-two seventy-two.
Second. We have a motion in the second to approve resolution number two-four dash eight-two seven-two. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. And we, we as a commission are a little bit kind of still processing this information and I will turn the floor over to city manager, Michael Schrag, to make some comments.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I apologize for the timing of all this and it's with mixed emotions myself, but I did take the opportunity to prepare some remarks and I'm gonna do my best to get through them, so if you bear with me. My family and I absolutely love Salina. I thoroughly enjoy the work of being Salina's city manager now more than ever. And I sincerely believe the city organization as well as the community as a whole are in the best shape they've been in decades, if not ever. But it's time for me to begin drawing my pension in Kansas and return to Missouri. Consequently, I've accepted the city manager position in Warrensburg, Missouri. Not only does it fit into my family's financial plans, but it creates an opportunity for my stepfather to move in with us. And we will be thirty minutes to drive time for my father-in-law, whose health needs are significantly increasing. whose health needs are significantly increasing. And I am truly and sincerely excited about the professional opportunity that awaits me and the value that I believe I can add as Warrensburg, Missouri's next city manager. Hopefully, Warrensburg's the last stop in my city management career. I will consider myself blessed if I'm lucky enough to be able to look back on my time in Warrensburg as fondly and proudly as Salina. The timing in this announcement was affected by Warrensburg's selection process and timeline which has made it a little awkward around the holidays. And thanks to your agreeing to my request, my last day will be February 7th, 2024 and I'll be coordinating with city staff to hand off projects and responsibilities in the meantime. I believe there's undeniable consensus about how successful Salina has been as a community lately. Unprecedented excitement about the community momentum that's been built and significant optimism about our future and I certainly enjoyed being a part of that. There are too many deserving people to adequately give credit where it is due, but I want to note a few things. I believe that our recent successes are the result of unprecedented community collaboration, selfless effort and investment by the local private sector, courageous and steady leadership from city commissioners, exceptional assistance from state and federal elected officials, and impressive amount of effort and leadership well beyond the norm by city staff and legal counsel. Terrific leadership and foresight by our prior city manager, Jason Gage, lots and lots of creativity, a deliberate and persistent willingness on the part of staff to work outside our comfort zone, and strategic risk-taking, all of which are extremely rare for a community. I can honestly say in my 36-year career, I've never seen a community perform like this one. Not just the communities I worked in, but you know, as a city manager, you're looking around comparing yourself to peers and I just haven't seen a community do what this community has done. I've tried to convey to all of our employees and elected officials that public service is a very noble endeavor and each individual should take pride that they are community building to improve the lives of their friends, neighbors, and families. Over my career, I've tried to adopt and foster an attitude that we should be flattered by extremely high expectations, even when they come in the form of harsh criticism, since it just serves to underscore how much is expected of us and how much we are entrusted to serve our community. I wish each of you the best. If you aren't familiar with Theodore Roosevelt's remarks commonly referred to as the man in the arena, I encourage you to take a few minutes to find it online and reflect on his wisdom from 114 years ago. I am honored to have been in the arena with so many of you for the last 19 years and I look forward to watching Salina continue on the upward trajectory that it has built for itself. Thank you for the opportunity to serve you.
Thank you. And I know that comes from your heart and very sincere and we wish you the best, you and your family and as I have come to know you more and more, family does mean the world and as it should, so. Any, go ahead.
I just said thank you.
Any Commissioners like further comment?
Well, you know, it's, you've been here the whole time I've been here. Talk about waking up one morning and knowing that you're not here, that's going to be a real strange feeling, but we've been real sleep at the wheel if we haven't learned something from you and can't keep this train moving. So, truly wish you the best and I echo the mayor's sentiments. If everyone held their family as highly and as closely as you do, why these things we have to worry about wouldn't be issues at all. You've been a true role model for everyone here. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not saying goodbye yet, you've still got a few days to work, so.
I got a whole bunch of lists of things I gotta get done.
Right. I'll save my remarks for a later date.
And I would add that I think Mike has done a good job in developing talent, so to speak, and that we'll be okay. We'll be fine. And it'll be a transition, so.
With that, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
And with that, I would like to wish my fellow Commissioners a Merry Christmas and I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.